Just sent an email that uh, can hear Scott Dudley and Brady Coffee Keller will appear virtually on item one. We just have a two screen, I don't see the other two sides on yet.
Okay. Hi Mayor, it's Eric Hady, sound check. And uh, Ron's already done a sound check for you, so that's good.
Alrighty.
Who else did you need Jim?
Um, Scott Dudley, Brian.
Hey Mike. The, the uh, reward recipient.
Okay, I don't see them.
Oh, reward, Brady Coffee Keller.
Yeah, I don't see them, slayed did you?
No. Well, let's do them know to resend them a lake.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I just unmuted right now.
Oh, perfect, you sound excellent.
Hey Brady.
Broadcast has started sir, go ahead.
Evening.
It's like city council is coming in now.
Alright. Good afternoon, I'd like to go ahead and call this Tampa City Council meeting to order, roll call please.
Vieira.
Brady Coffee.
Here.
Goode.
Here.
Carlson.
You have a first session.
Here.
Ding Felder. Ding Felder.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda. And Maniscalco.
Here. Alright, uh, first is uh, ceremonial activity, Councilmember Goode, I believe this is yours, go ahead sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you for your attention, of course you're seeing. Tonight we have Mr. Brady Coffee Keller, is thirteen years old, and an eighth grader at LLT Academy in Tampa. He's a member of the National Junior Arms Society, and Brady is also a part of the Falcon News Crew at LLT. In his free time, he enjoys going to Disney World and playing video games. Apparently Brady was in a contest of an essay for what it would feel like, or what it would be like to be mayor. And we want to proudly give him this combination, I think we have Mayor Castro on the line, the mayor of the city of Tampa.
Somebody's got their phone in here, they're screwing up.
We'll wait on you, we'll wait on you, how you doing Brady?
Yeah, thank you, how about you?
Alright, we're waiting for Madam Mayor to get Brady, there she goes.
My IT, uh, my IT assistant had their, left their phone in here on audio. Um, alright Brady, I am so excited uh, with your essay, and I tell you what, you can come and be mayor here in Tampa, uh, anytime, because your ideas are exactly what we're working on here in the city of Tampa. Uh, myself, in the mayor's position, along with city council. Looking at our parks, parks are so important to us. Uh, you mentioned having after-school programs, and we have several of those uh, throughout our city. We also have a program that was implemented by the previous administration called Stay in Play. And that allows um, our youth to have constructive activity in our open parks uh, until ten o'clock at night, and we also, um, we also provide dinner for them. So, a lot of great ideas in our parks and recreation. You also brought up recycling. We do have recycling bins for all of our residents, unfortunately, people don't follow the rules, and they really don't know how to recycle appropriately, and so we spend a lot of time on educating. We take all of our recycling products to a recycler located down in Ebor City, and unfortunately, we are called back to take about three quarters of that to our waste-to-energy plant. So, we have to make sure that people are recycling appropriately, so we spend a great deal of time on that. You talked about our, our um, being eco-friendly, and we are just literally focused on the environment here in our community. We actually hired the first uh, Resiliency and Sustainability Officer for the city of Tampa, and we're focusing on, you mentioned solar, we're looking at that, putting on city-owned uh, businesses, we just bought our first series of electric uh, vehicles. We are also, I mentioned, we have, we're only one of two cities in the United States that has our own, we own and operate our own waste-to-energy uh, plant, and of that energy, uh, we're going to use for our, our trucks that we use in solid waste. So, we're doing a lot of that, also talked about um, the environment and keeping it clean, we just started beet-free bay, making sure that those gasparola beets don't end up in, in the, in our bay, we have a tree program, we have community gardens, and we're really focused on the water, making sure that we are saving water for the future, ensuring that we have uh, clean drinking water for all of Tampa Bay area. So, thank you for all of those ideas, and please, 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 keep those coming. And I thank Councilman Goode for bringing you on here. I also thank uh, Scott Dudley, and uh, uh, the uh, Florida City Mayors, and uh, I really do appreciate everybody's input in this, and thank you, thank you, thank you Brady, for uh, for giving us all of those great ideas, and keep those coming, because one day you're gonna be running this unit.
Thank you Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Well Brady, it's that time to give you your, your accolade. Tampa City Council is proud to honor Brady Coffee Keller of the LLT Academy with this accommodation for receiving the distinction of being the second-place winner in the Florida League of, League of Mayors, Florida League of Cities. If I were mayor essay contest, this contest encourages young people to think about public service and future community leadership. Brady's essay is a great reflection on the role of being the mayor, and importance of being the highest elected official in the city. Brady currently expressed what he would do to improve the city if he were mayor. Leaders are always planning for the future, have a vision, roadmap, and game plan which speaks to the strengths and the goals of the future. Brady Coffee Keller is currently a leader with great achievements yet to come. It's a great pleasure that Tampa City Council presents this accommodation on the twenty eighth, twenty eighth day of January twenty twenty-one. Thank you Brady. And let me show you your nice uh-
Very welcome. Thank you.
...accommodation here, and we're gonna get that to you, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, uh, thanks for having me here, and I don't really know, I'm just really surprised that I won this, it's, it's quite the honor.
Well, we, we thank you, thank you for your leadership, I see we have Scott Dudley on, on the uh, virtual call, you'd like to say something Scott?
Uh, yes, thank you, and uh, councilmembers and mayor, good to see you, and Brady, congratulations to you. I'm uh, the executive director of the Florida League of Mayors, we have uh, over two-hundred-and-fifty mayors from across the state that are members of the Florida League of Mayors, they get together to talk about ideas, like the ones that you raised in your paper Brady, they, they share ideas, they think about what ways to, to tackle problems that are, that are uh, that cities are looking at all around the state, they share those ideas, and uh, they like new ideas, and so we'll, we'll, we shared your essay with the other mayors across the state, with the mayors across state, and uh, I'm sure I wouldn't be surprised to see some of your ideas get implemented somewhere, and so uh, to be at your age, and to be thinking so uh, globally, and looking at the bigger picture is really, it's, it's good, it's, it's good to see our youth doing, that are, that they're uh, I, I have a lot more uh, hope for our future than I did, than I previously did, uh, and so that's a, that's a really good thing, and we greatly appreciate that you're uh, that you participated in the contest, and that uh, and congratulations for, for being a winner, it was a really good essay, and as I said, thinking ahead, and I, I think you're gonna do great thing, stay focused, and uh, if you ever get to Tallahassee, maybe you're gonna pick a great college and come to FSU, and uh, if we can help you when you get up here, that's where we're located, uh, come by and see us at the League of Cities, and we'd be uh, happy to put you to, at an internship or something like that, so uh, come, come by and see us when you get older and get into college, and we'll uh, keep, keep your thought processes going, so, we'll work you hard, but we'll uh, but, but it'll be a good, a good experience for you, so, and councilmembers, thank you for all that you all do, uh, great public servants, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you Scott. Uh, I actually recently just got accepted into a collegiate program at my local high school.
Congratulations, that's great.
Congratulations for my um, collegiate future.
Excellent, well good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
You got a bright future ahead of you man, that's great.
Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you for, I was gonna say something.
We have a, we have a gift certificate for you for fifty dollars, and then we have a plaque that we're gonna mail to you, uh, it's a resolution by the League of Mayors, uh, just uh, basically uh, uh, recognizing your achievement for winning the award, and uh, we're really proud, and we, we hope that you'll encourage your next set of uh, the classmates coming behind you to participate in this, and uh, and to stay focused on important issues.
Thank you Scott.
Mr. Chairman, on you.
Councilman Carlson. I, I just wanna say congratulations, and as the mayor said, um, we look forward to uh, seeing you step up um, to run for mayor, some other office in the future, or helping in other ways, and there's no age that's, that's too early, as you know, um, and I'm sure you're involved in a lot of things already, but if any of us can help, uh, please reach out to us, uh, uh, my email's bill.carlson@tampagov.net, you're welcome to email. Also, I run a program on Friday's Cafe con Tampa, you're welcome to come anytime you want for free. There was a guy, Kevin O'Hare, who's a friend with lots of us, who had seventeen, started coming, going to events like that, he would skip school from, I think he went to Plant City High School, not recommending skipping school, uh, but now he's like twenty-two, I think he just turned, uh, but he uh, was one of the leaders of all for transportation, getting citywide, uh, countywide transportation uh, funding, and he was just recently grassroots lead in, uh, in part of Hillsborough for uh, President Biden's campaign, and he's making lots of changes in lots of ways, and just graduated college like a year ago, so, um, you know, the sooner we can get uh, smart, interested folks like you involved, the better our community will be, so let us know how we can help, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Vieira.
Uh, thank you very much, that is, that is awesome, was Kevin skipping school to go to Cafe con Tampa?
Yeah, he would go to school an hour late.
What a nerd, and I say that, and I, I'm a nerd, but good, good for him, that's awesome. Um, just, no, wanted, wanted to say congratulations, it's funny that you say that you were surprised that you won, I, I was surprised when I won my first race, so that makes two of us, right? But um, just congratulations, I, I, I would encourage you to just continue to be involved, um, you know, when, when I was younger, I got involved in politics, when I was eighteen, I interned in, in Washington DC, in the, in the Capitol, in the then House Minority Leader's Office, and uh, and I've just always been involved, and I think that, you know, whether you're Republican or a Democrat or whatever, um, your, you know, pub, public service can be a very patriotic endeavor to improve our community, and the great thing about public service is you can take those issues that matter to you, based upon your life experiences, that you can be earnest and sincere and compassionate about, and make changes on them, things that you care about, things that you bring a unique perspective to, I don't mean to point at you, but, but things that you bring a, a, a unique perspective to, so, anything that I can do to help, just, just let me know, I mean that, God bless you and congratulations.
Anybody else, Councilman Citro?
Brady, congratulations to you my friend, uh, you have taken the first step to achieving your goal, what I recommend to you is, the moment you turn eighteen, get on a board, get on a commission, get, get on some sort of entity or body that makes important decisions for the city. Hone your skills, learn the process, and ensure you know what you're talking about, and out of due respect for you for winning this award, let me be the first one to call you Mr. Mayor.
Very good, well congratulations, uh, the Kevin O'Hare that they've mentioned, I'm actually meeting for coffee tomorrow morning at seven-thirty, and I've told him, just like I'm gonna tell you, I wish I would've gotten involved at your age, or just as young, I didn't get involved in politics until I was twenty-five, which, to some people it's young, but I wish I would've started ten years earlier or more, uh, because it's so important, you know, the foundation that you begin building will reap, uh, you know, so many benefits for you in the future, so congratulations, you're doing good things, we're very proud of you, and the mayor on the call is very proud of you, and like she said, you know, soon you'll be leading, you'll be leading the city, so uh, thank you for setting a great example, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job Brady, congratulations. Thank you council.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, I see uh, Mr. Schmidt on the line, are you here for the uh, the mutual aid uh, walk-on?
Uh, yes sir.
Go ahead sir.
Um, I have a walk-on for the mutual aid agreement, it's with five um, agencies, uh, they are Orange County Sheriff's Office, Orlando.
Jacksonville, Largo.
Jacksonville, right, yes sir, Jacksonville, um, Largo, and Sarasota Sheriff's Office. So, we've reached out to, we've reached out to all of them, they all uh, are uh, entering into the mutual aid agreements with us, they're all providing assistance during the Superbowl, and that was the reason for uh, this walk-on, we needed this all executed prior to the Superbowl, so, we're respectfully requesting that this resolution be approved.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby if I can.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just uh, I, I would just, I might've missed this comment, but uh, this is moving the substitute, is that correct, it's been filed with the clerk? Mr. Schmidt, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
That is correct, there is a substituted one that was submitted, um, I think this morning.
Yeah, I have it right here sir.
Okay, thank you, so, for the purposes of the clerk, it could be, if you could move the substitute please.
Alright, any, if there's no questions or comments, can I get a motion to move the substitute?
Move substitute resolution.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Vieira, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, Mr. Schmidt?
Oh sir, that takes care of it, thank you sir.
Thank you very much, we'll move on to the agenda, a little bit of housekeeping, item six, seven, and fourteen are not gonna be heard tonight, let me start with item number six, item-
If you could take those individually please.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm doing, item number six, uh, cannot be heard, there's a petition to withdraw, um, and that's by the applicant, Mr. Cassidy, can I get a motion to withdraw Councilman uh, Goode with the motion, second from Councilman Vieira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, item number seven is an email from Mr. Patrick Thorpe, as representative, also a petition to withdraw, we have motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, and then item number fourteen, um, applicant did not perfect notice, so we cannot hear it, can I get a motion to remove that?
Second.
Motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. Alright, that settles the agenda for the cleanup and the housekeeping, so we start off with, um, can I get a motion to open the um-
So moves?
Public hearings.
Open move public hearing?
Motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman, I'm sorry, motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, item number two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just for the record, uh, if the clerk could notice, uh, that I've, I've been on for the last couple of minutes, I missed the roll call.
Yes, I do have you for five fifteen PM.
We have you logged in at five fifteen.
Works for me, thank you.
Very good, item number two.
Great.
Two.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Crew, City Clerk's Office, we have two individuals registered to speak for the representative, David Kilcoin is uh, on the meeting, Tony Martino has not signed into the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Alright, who's gonna speak on item number two? I know we have two registered individuals.
Mr. Kilcoin, if you could turn on your camera and be sworn in. I'm sorry, it's not a, don't need to be sworn in, but please turn on your camera.
Mr. Kilcoin, if you could please turn on your camera?
Counsel, um, are you able to hear me, I'm sorry?
We hear you, but we can't see you.
Sure, sorry, so this is Patrick Perez, I, I'm, I'm in uh, the city attorney's office, I'm assistant city attorney.
Yep.
Um, I just, uh, while, while Mr. Kilcoin is setting it up, just a bit of a background, this is a resolution that's setting a public hearing for a special streetlight assessment, um, uh, it would be for next month, and uh, Mr. Kilcoin is the, the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Kilcoin and Mr. Martino are the two uh, applicants representatives that I see here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If it's merely a resolution, I don't know that we need evidence, et cetera, Mr. Assistant City Attorney, if not, I'll move the resolution.
I was about to ask that myself, Mr. Ding Felder.
Counsel, ye- yes, that is correct, this is just the resolution to set the hearing, um, it does, it, it'll be uh, noticed in the public uh, for four consecutive weeks, so it'll be, come back on February uh, twenty-eighth.
Great.
So, correct, we do not, we do not met the applicant here, it is just a resolution setting the hearing.
Alright, we have a motion from Councilman Ding Felder.
Resolution setting mayor on twenty-eighth.
Alright, we have a motion from Councilman Ding Felder, who's the second? Second from Councilman Goode, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Item number three, um, item number three, I, I see we have a Brian Sykes, uh, that's registered, okay, who would like to um, go ahead and begin with that, I see Miss Malone on the uh, line.
Yes, Jennifer Malone, your planning commission, um, if I could share my screen?
If we could share the screen?
Yeah, but they have presentation too.
Uh, Jennifer, on the planning commission, can everyone see my screen, it should say Tampa Conference of Planning Amendment twenty dash twenty-one.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so this is a plan amendment that is in the Central Tampa Planning District, as well as within the West Tampa Urban Village. Um, it is just west of University of Tampa, um, we see North Boulevard there to the west as well, South Kennedy, or uh, Kennedy Boulevard is the south of the subject site, but it is not, it is out of frame, um, as I'm sure you guys are aware, this area has changed quite a bit in the last several years, um, it is a mixture of industrial, but really transitioning to that multifamily development pattern, um, to the north, we also have the, the river, and then Tampa Preparatory School as well. I have some site pictures, it's a little hard to get pictures of the site, but this is uh, kind of looking into the site at West Carmen Street and North Delaware Avenue, this is another view of the site facing east towards University of Tampa, so we do see those railroad tracks, and then this is North Edison Avenue facing south towards the subject site, and towards downtown. Um, it is a privately initiated amendment, it is small scale at about three-point-eight-seven acres, the subject site has three land use designations, general mixed-use twenty-four, urban mixed-use sixty, and public semi-public, the request before you today is to be one future land use designation of urban mixed-use sixty. Um, it is kind of hard to tell on this map because of our, our, the, the black boundary lines, but the entire site will not change, a small portion of the site on the eastern edge will remain the public semi-public future land use designation, and that is where the railroad tracks are, but the remainder of the site will change to, um, we have three land use designations in the area, and the applicant is requesting that it is taken to one land use designation of um, urban mixed-use sixty, so urban mixed-use sixty is already present to the east of the subject site, um, general mixed-use twenty-four is further east, regional mixed-use one hundred is to the north, um, that is the, that is the Tampa Preparatory School, and then we see that public future land use designation is representing this, the University of Tampa, but just to be clear, a portion of this portfolio will remain public semi-public, and I will, I'm sure the applicant will uh, further elaborate on that in his presentation, so we have, um, this would increase the potential from about a hundred and thirty units to about two-hundred-and-forty units, it would also increase the dam intensity from about three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand square feet to five-hundred-and-seventy thousand square feet. In the proposed future land use designation of urban mixed-use sixty, the applicant can utilize that square footage number for residential, or non-residential, or a mixture, um, essentially this is going to amend the entire site to a unified future land use designation to allow for this redevelopment to occur, not associated with the public use. We do have comments um, in your packet from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, um, City of Tampa Development and Growth Management is also here to speak on their comments when I enter with this presentation, um, the Hillsborough County School Board did note that a couple of the schools don't have adequate capacity, and those are all in your packets. Um, the planning commission did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan, I have the historical aerial on the site, on the slide right now, um, it, this parcel was utilized as a rail yard, which is why it was wider, um, it's, there's a lot of width to accommodate that sorting and loading and unloading, and infrastructure storage historically, but as you all are aware, this area has shifted towards multifamily and mixed-use, the University of Tampa has really grown, um, and that shift is supported by the plan, which seeks to um, build upon and support the University of Tampa as one of the city's economic engines. Um, um, this is also consistent with several of our policies regarding the compact city form strategy, uh, we encourage the mixed-use and full development within proximity to the existing transit near the site, and employment services, um, this will provide redevelopment land uh, for housing, um, to meet Tampa's growing population, as well as, um, it's consistent with our policy regarding new housing on vacant or underutilized land, um, and again, the planning commission did find this consistent, that resolution is in your packet, um, and I am available for any questions, and I will pass it on to Frank Hall with the City of Tampa.
Any questions? No, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, this is Frank Hall with the City of Tampa, the city planning, uh, city planning has reviewed the requests, and we have no objections at this time, our comments have been provided in the packets, uh, so unless you have any further questions, uh, I will pass this on to Melanie Callaway, uh, she-
It is kind of hard to tell on this map because of our... The black boundary lines, but the entire site will not change. A small portion of the site on the eastern edge will remain the public semi-public future land use designation, and that is where the railroad tracks are. But the remainder of the site will change to... We have three land use designations in the area, and the applicant is requesting that it is taken to one land use designation of urban mixed-use sixty. So urban mixed-use sixty is already present to the east of the subject site. General mixed-use twenty-four is further east. Regional mixed-use one hundred is to the north. That is the Tampa Preparatory School. And then we see that public future land use designation is representing the University of Tampa. But just to be clear, a portion of this portfolio will remain public semi-public, and I will... I'm sure the applicant will further elaborate on that in his presentation. So we have... This would increase the potential from about one hundred and thirty units to about two hundred and forty units. It would also increase the dam intensity from about three hundred and fifteen thousand square feet to five hundred and seventy thousand square feet. In the proposed future land use designation of urban mixed-use sixty, the applicant can utilize that square footage number for residential or non-residential or a mixture. Essentially, this is going to amend the entire site to a unified future land use designation to allow for this redevelopment to occur, not associated with the public use. We do have comments in your packet from the Metropolitan Planning Organization. City of Tampa Development and Growth Management is also here to speak on their comments when I am done with this presentation. The Hillsborough County School Board did note that a couple of the schools don't have adequate capacity, and those are all in your packets. The planning commission did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan. I have the historical aerial on the site on the slide right now. This parcel was utilized as a rail yard, which is why it was wider. There's a lot of width to accommodate that sorting and loading and unloading and infrastructure storage historically. But as you all are aware, this area has shifted towards multifamily and mixed use. The University of Tampa has really grown, and that shift is supported by the plan, which seeks to build upon and support the University of Tampa as one of the city's economic engines. This is also consistent with several of our policies regarding the compact city form strategy. We encourage the mixed-use infill development within proximity to the existing transit near the site and employment services. This will provide redevelopment land for housing to meet Tampa's growing population as well as it's consistent with our policy regarding new housing on vacant or underutilized land. And again, the planning commission did find this consistent. That resolution is in your packet, and I am available for any questions, and I will pass it on to Frank Hall with the City of Tampa.
Any questions? No, go ahead.
Good evening. This is Frank Hall with the City of Tampa. The city planning has reviewed the requests, and we have no objections at this time. Our comments have been provided in the packets. So unless you have any further questions, I will pass this on to Melanie Callaway. She's on the line to review comments for mobility. Any questions?
Any questions? If not, we go to Melanie. Nope. Go ahead, Melanie. You're muted. You're muted.
Melanie Callaway, Transportation Planning.
Good.
I think you can... I think it's a little delayed.
Yes, you're good. You're good.
So you might... It might not sync up. So Transportation Planning, I had comments in the package, but they have changed. You were emailed the additional comments this morning from Abby Feely, but I'm going to summarize my comments for you, just so you have them. So for at least twenty years, the City of Tampa Transportation Planning staff has worked diligently to preserve the right-of-way along CSX rail corridor, specifically within the corridor from North Boulevard Cass to Willow, all the way down to the Inter Bay area. There are numerous proposed right-of-way vacating applications discussed in this immediate area of this subject application over the years and were discouraged from moving forward in order to maintain access to the CSX rail corridor. There were several zoning applications that were approved along this corridor that incorporated such things as future rail pad commitment, a sidewalk on their property line on the east side adjacent to the rail corridor to maintain that access to the CSX corridor. This corridor is critical for our future rail and multimodal needs. There is a regional planning effort that is provided by the Tampa Bay Regional Transit Authority, also known as TIBARDA, in their plan in Vision 2030, the future of transit in Tampa Bay, Tampa Bay's first regional transit development plan. The regional transit vision network map clearly shows this corridor for future rail transit. In context of the city's mobility and multimodal system goals, the location and design of the subject property can have substantial impact on the overall system. It is our intent to inform both city council and the applicant of the unique planning opportunity, which will be reviewed at the time of rezoning, for the implementation and consistency with the comp plan policies that I have provided in my memo to you earlier today from Abby Feely. And those are all my comments. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
We have a question from Councilman Gooz.
Melanie, was this the site that originally that we found the nautilus, and now we're changing it to consistent now?
Yes.
What changed?
You are correct.
What changed?
I'm sorry. There has been... May I should back up? My comments previously were provided on September fifteenth of 2020 to our staff as well as the planning commission. I was unaware that my comments were an issue until January nineteenth last week. With that issue that came up, there had been long discussion in the past week about my comments, and therefore the comments had changed to what I provided to you today.
Maybe I must be missing that.
Abby Feely emailed them early this afternoon.
We've been counseled all day. She emailed this afternoon, you said?
Yes.
Anybody else have questions? No? All right.
Let me look at it a minute. I remember this vaguely. I remember it distinctly. That's why when it said it changed, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. I'll go to Dingfelder in the meantime, and then we'll come back to you.
That's fine.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Councilman Gooz brings up a good question. Ms. Callaway, not to put you on the spot or put your job at any risk, but as your... Did your opinion change, or did just the letter from the city change?
She's on the spot, Mr. Dingfelder.
Councilman Gooz, correct. I am on the spot. Both of you are putting me on the spot.
She's on the spot, so I wouldn't want to do that.
Well, I'll tell you what. I'm going to send a message real loud and clear from now on to your supervisors. Okay? If your supervisors want to have a different opinion, then they need to come down here and give it to us themselves. They shouldn't put professional staff on the... In the position of having to change their opinion and being as uncomfortable as this very, very well-qualified and fine-staffed person finds herself. So I don't know where that direction came from, but it obviously came from above, and that's not right. Okay? I'm not saying that they don't have the right to give their own opinion and to give a different opinion from the city, but they need to come do it themselves if that's what they're going to do. That's just... That's just my humble opinion and my humble statement as one city councilman. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Keep up the good work.
Just for the record, Michelle, City Clerk.
I'm inclined to send this back and maybe get an explanation from her superiors, I mean, what to change.
Counsel, this is Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. You haven't even heard from the applicant yet. This is a privately initiated plan amendment that is properly before you this evening. With respect to the change in the comments from staff, it was my understanding that Abby Feely and other representatives in the Transportation Mobility Department, the intent was to further clarify the city's position and comments. And I would, you know, Councilman Gooz, you indicated that this was previously found inconsistent. Just a correction, there were previously objections by Ms. Callaway, but that was not a finding of inconsistency. And the memorandum filed by Ms. Feely earlier today just further clarifies the city's position. But with all due respect, we haven't even heard from the applicant yet.
Ms. Wells, I appreciate your comments, and I do take that into consideration. We can hear from the applicants, but I think council still has the right to make decisions. But I do appreciate your comments, and I was respectful we'll hear from the applicant.
All right. Let's hear from the applicant. We have a Mr. Sykes on the line. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
I should be unmuted. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Excellent. Brian Sykes of Marine Partners Law. I'm here representing the applicant in this matter. So to start out with, and maybe to set the table a little bit more strongly for this so everyone understands, this property represents excess property for CSX. In 2018, CSX formally put the property out and started marketing it for sale. My client, in 2020, approximately May of 2020, put the property under contract. My client's had a relationship with CSX, has done other transactions with them, and saw this as an opportunity to develop a unique urban infill project without displacing any other types of uses. The staff has noted quite correctly that this area has undergone a change, a fairly significant change. Mr. Dingfelder and I had had a conversation a few weeks ago and talking about the change because he was around when I had the... One of the first privately initiated small-scale amendments in this area, which started out what was called West End Project. We took out a bunch of warehouse uses, a bunch of industrial uses, and turned it into multifamily opportunities and for rent product and for sale product as well. And then things continued to grow in that area. There's been more growth as far as residential, more growth as far as commercial, and the area has turned into a unique vibrant area. My client looked at this property and saw an opportunity to do a really unique project, something that, as I said, would not displace other types of uses, but would utilize vacant land that today is used as a dumping ground. If you would walk down the... Alongside of the tracks, you would see mattresses there. You'd see garbage there. It's somewhat of an eyesore what's happened to that area. The project also is unique and attractive to my client in that it is close to downtown. It's close to UT. It is... It's going to have a high walkability score. It's going to have a high urban transportation score. We all see the scooters in town. It'd be very simple and easy to be riding scooters to and from the university, your work, what have you, in this location. So the site, as staff noted, is... Currently has three different land use designations. It's got GMU twenty-four, UMU sixty, and public quasi-public. If the PQP designation had not approached into the site by about seven to ten feet, we wouldn't even be here before you today. We could have accomplished what we want to accomplish with the UMU sixty and the GMU twenty-four. However, because of that small sliver of the PQP, we needed to come through for this small-scale amendment, and we determined let's just go through and make everything consistent, make it to UMU sixty. The one thing I want to make very clear and want everyone to understand is that the railroad is not going away. The railroad will remain intact. The railroad will be there for future use, whether by CSX, whether by a joint use agreement with the city in CSX, whether by a private initiative that decides to provide rail transportation, but the railroad will be there. We are not proposing, nor has CSX proposed in any manner, to shut down the railroad. That is an important track. It's an important track that runs down to South Tampa, runs through downtown and up. There's nothing that's going to happen to it. The design that my client has come up with, although we cannot go into it today, we'll be bringing it up during the rezoning process, is a very unique design. It takes into consideration the urban area. The crux of our arguments for this is that it is a true infill project. It's utilizing underutilized land today in a manner that is beneficial to the city. It will provide additional ridership for the public transportation services, and it provides some housing that will be very close to the university. We are going to be discussing with the university plans on a prospective crossing or over the railroad from our project site over to UT. That will be coming up. We'll be discussing that more later. It's a unique opportunity. It's a unique opportunity to do something with land that's not being utilized currently, and we have no intentions of doing anything that would take away the opportunity to utilize the rail. I'm available for any questions, should council have any.
Do we have any questions from council members? Councilman Dingfelder, then Councilman Citro.
Mr. Sykes, the... Generally speaking, I've been pretty vocal in favor of intensifying development along the Kennedy Corridor, and I think this would pretty much qualify as the Kennedy Corridor. So conceptually, I don't have a problem with greater intensity from this plan amendment. I know we're not in the rezoning phase right this second, but I did note that one of Ms. Callaway's comments from her earlier transmission, maybe even this one as well, spoke to the importance of cross-access, of getting to those tracks, of the community being able to get to those tracks. So again, I know we're not in the PD phase, and I know you don't have a site plan in front of us, but eventually you will, I assume. But I hope that when that day comes, that your client will be very, very sensitive to the importance... Important location that this property is at as related to the community's future ability to, you know, to get to the tracks for whatever that means. We don't know what it means. But obviously, our transportation folks have been trying to preserve that access for many, many years. So anyway, that's my two cents.
Councilman Citro.
Mr. Sykes, you were going to say something?
No, I just said understood.
Okay. Because this is talking about land use and not what is going to be going there, I won't have Ms. Wells raise her hand in objection. However, I am going to make the same type of statement that Councilman Dingfelder has. Since this request is based on a multimodal system, I'm hoping that in the future, you're going to come to us with something that is going to actually use these railroad tracks and be able... Your design is going to make it so that these tracks can be readily used and available to the people which might be living or working in this proposed site. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Great. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number three? And just to clarify the record, I know I made this motion. Can I get a motion to open items three through five?
So moved.
We have motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Gooz. All in favor?
Aye.
Just to keep it clear, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak? Anybody in person down below? Is there anybody that's in the room here to speak in person? I know there's not, but I have to ask.
No response, Mr. Chairman.
Right. We have motion to close from Councilman Gooz.
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have an ordinance for first reading. Councilman Viera, would you mind taking it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I present an ordinance for first reading consideration. An ordinance amending Imagine, the Imagine, 2040, Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property located west of the University of Tampa, south of West Cass Street, and east of North Willow Street from urban mixed-use sixty, UMU sixty, general mixed-use twenty-four, GMU twenty-four, and public semi-public P/SP to urban mixed-use sixty, UMU sixty, providing repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Gooz?
No.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda. Motion carried with Gooz voting no. Miranda being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March fourth at nine thirty AM.
Thank you very much. Item number four. Jennifer Malone.
Jennifer Malone, your planning commission staff. I'm going to share my screen.
Yes, we can see it.
Great. Okay. This is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment twenty oh four. This was transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity by motion of counsel on October first. Twenty dash oh four ESR is the number that the Department of Economic Opportunity gave this, and they had no comment on this proposal. And my... If you bear with me, my PowerPoint doesn't want to advance. This was publicly initiated by the planning commission staff with the cooperation of City Tampa's staff. It's just deleting an objective and some associated policies and kind of updating the language, and we did find it consistent.
All right. City of Tampa?
This is Frank Hall with the City of Tampa. The city planning has reviewed the request, and we have no objections at this time. Comments have been provided in your packets, and I am available for any additional questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? And there's no applicant on this. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. And we've checked below, and there's no one to speak on this item. Item number four. Can I get a motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close from Councilman Gooz, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number four?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. File number C A T P A twenty dash zero four ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Public Safety Land Use Goal eleven, removing land use objective eleven point three, remuneration the objective immediately following thereafter, and modifying policy language directing the Tampa Police Department to focus on neighborhood crime and drug activity, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Wait a minute. There's someone standing at the podium below. Are you here for public comment?
There's no one here.
Oh. All right. Thank you very much. Great. Councilman Citro made the motion. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Gooz. Roll call vote.
Miranda? Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
And Viera?
Yep.
Motion carried with Viera being, correction, motion carried with Miranda being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March fourth at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next is item number five, Jennifer Malone.
Jennifer Malone, your planning commission. Item number five is a park amendment twenty dash twelve. It's Williams Park. This was, it's about ten point six-six acres. It's over that ten-acre threshold, so we must transmit it to the Department of Economic Opportunity, which this board voted to do on September twenty-fourth. Twenty dash oh three is the number that D E O gave this amendment, and they had no comment. Just to refresh you, this is where it is located, just south of some schools, east of North Fourteenth Street. The request is from recreational open space and light industrial to the recreational open space, and we found it consistent, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. City of Tampa?
Good evening. Frank Hall with the City of Tampa. City Planning has reviewed this request, and we have no objections at this time. Our comments have been provided in your packets, and I am available for additional questions, should need be.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council members? No? All right. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number five?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Thank you. Wait, anybody in the public down below? I know the answer, but gotta ask. Can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion to close for Councilman Guzal, second for Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Councilman Guzal, would you mind reading item number five?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ordinance being presented for first reading. Consideration, an ordinance amending Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for a property located at forty-three sixty-two East Osborne Avenue, and otherwise known as Williams Park, from light industrial allied to, and in recreational slash open space to recreational open space, providing for repeal of all ordinance in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Guzal, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goods?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda. Motion carried with Miranda being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March fourth at nine thirty a.m.
Thank you very much. It's five fifty-two. We can't start the rest of the hearings until six, so let's go to new business from council members. Is that okay if it's not too early so we can get out of the way? Councilman Viera, do you have anything for new business?
Aye, no, sir.
Councilman Citro, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening.
Councilman Guzal, do you have anything? Councilman Carlson? Councilman Dingfelder?
Yes. So, earlier this afternoon on new business, I made a motion that passed unanimously in regard to that provision of chapter seven and that limits us to only doing land use, excuse me, zoning amendments twice a year. Legal staff has asked for clarification on that, and so I wanted to give them a little more clarification to come, and specifically, I'm going to amend my earlier motion and restate it with more specificity. And Mr. Shelby, you said that was amending twenty-seven one fifty-one, is that correct?
I believe so, and Ms. Wells is also online, if you had anything, Ms. Wells, if you wanted to ask.
Yeah, well, I'll clarify it, and then if she wants to ask a question, she can.
Okay.
Specifically, to amend chapter twenty-seven one fifty-one, to provide city council with the ability to, with the ability to visit chapter twenty-seven amendments at least quarterly, or let's say, let's say quarterly, if it's the desire of council. And if staff wants to continue to do, you know, semi-annual updates, that's fine. We can leave that provision alone, but staff would do those. But if the need be, if the neighborhoods or some other issue comes up that council wants to amend, that we have the ability to do that on a quarterly basis, more frequently than what we provide right now.
All right. That's an official motion?
That's an official amended motion from my, from my earlier motion this afternoon.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Guzal, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
No, thank you, counsel.
All right, it's five fifty-five. We have to wait five minutes, so we're in recess until six. I wish I could say we're adjourned, but, you know. Welcome back. Roll call, please.
Viera?
Here.
Goods?
Yes.
Carlson? Ding Felder? Citro?
Here.
Miranda? And Maniscalco?
Here. All right, just to be safe, let's open items number, we already did it, but items number six through fifteen. We have motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Guzal, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number eight. If you could please raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. Mr. Crew? Oh, there we are.
We're on the second floor.
Do you swear from you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, I see Mr. Fernandez on the line, who'd like to begin with this item.
Good evening. This is Kamaria Pettis-Mappo from the City Attorney's Office. This item is before you as a petition seeking review of the Architectural Review Commission decision made during its meeting that occurred on October fifth of two thousand twenty. I've previously provided legal counsel, Mr. Shelby, a copy of sample motions, and in the sample motions, you will find the hardship criteria that set forth in code section twenty-seven dash one-one-four subsection D. Pursuant to section twenty-seven dash sixty-one subsection J, subsection two, city council applies a de novo standard of review. Your decision is not limited in its review to that information, documentation, or evidence upon which the commission based its determination. Instead, you can take public testimony, accept new evidence, and make a decision based on the application, the applicant meeting the hardship criteria set forth in section twenty-seven dash one-one-four subsection D. The items, the materials that were included for this agenda item were the copy of the initial application for the variance, the staff report, the Architectural Review Commission's written decision, the petition for review, and the affidavit establishing compliance with the notice requirement. The application filed with the A R, the Architectural Review Commission, requested a variance for the north side yard setback from seven feet to five feet with an encroachment of two feet for eaves and gutters. Section, after reviewing section twenty-seven dash sixty-one subsection J two A, after considering all the evidence introduced into the record at this evening's hearing, city council may affirm the Architectural Review decision, decision to deny the variance. Council may overturn the Architectural Review Commission's decision and approve the variance with or without condition, or council may remand this item back to the Architectural Review Commission. You will now have a brief presentation by Dennis Fernandez with Historic Preservation, and I'm available for any questions if you may have.
Any questions at this time? No? All right, next.
Good evening. This is Dennis Fernandez, Architecture Review and Historic Preservation Manager. To give you a brief summary of the application, the property is located at six thirteen South Oregon Avenue, which is in the Hyde Park Local Historic District, and an application was submitted on June fifteenth of two thousand twenty to conduct both work on the principal structure and on an accessory structure. The hearing was scheduled after the notice was perfected and occurred on August the third of two thousand twenty for the first hearing, at which the request for the accessory structure to demolish and rebuild was granted. There were no variances attached to that request, and that was approved by the commission. At the end of that particular hearing, after going through a variance discussion, the applicants decided to continue their variance request. It was then placed on the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty A R C public hearing agenda, at which time the applicants once again presented their variance hardship. There was discussion by the commission. However, the vote to deny the variance ties with a two-two vote, which through the rules of procedure, entailed an automatic continuance to the next hearing. That hearing occurred on October fifth of two thousand twenty. The variance request at that particular time for a north side yard variance from seventeen feet to five feet with an encroachment of two feet for eaves and gutters was denied by a vote of three to. If I can share my screen for a minute, I will give you a photo overview. Can you see that?
Yes, we can. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. On the screen, there is a map of the Hyde Park Local Historic District. It's a little difficult to see, but just in this small green box is where the subject property is located, just north of Swan Avenue on Oregon and just north of the Hyde Park Village Development. This is an aerial showing the property a little bit more clear. You can see it does front Oregon with a commercial development on the south and residential development otherwise around it. There is an alley that runs along the rear. This is a contributing structure, very nice craftsman-style home in the historic district. This is the east elevation. Moving around, this is the south elevation that abuts the commercial. I'll show you a photo of that in just a moment. Difficult to take a picture of the north elevation, but this is the area where the rear addition necessitated the variance. I'll show you a closer photo of that that was provided by the applicant. In this general area here on the side yard, this is R S fifty zoning. There's a seven-foot side yard setback that's required, and once again, the request was to encroach into that by two feet. This is a photo of the same area of the rear and the side yard on the south. This is a photo from the alley with the accessory structure that was approved in the prior hearing. This is the property that abuts to the north. This is from the alley, the property that abuts to the south. This is the rear, as I said, of the Hyde Park Village. This is a view looking south along Oregon. You see that commercial development there on the right, and turning around and looking north, another view on Oregon. I did include the site plan, which I'm sure the agent will go through. You see the area in question for the variance was this small bump out, reducing the side yard setback from seven to five. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions from council members? Councilman Dingfelder? Yes, sir.
So, I guess we'll hear from Mr. Grandoff, but the little bump out that you're speaking to, how many square feet is that, in terms of the proposed encroachment? It looks pretty small.
I believe it's twenty-two square feet. I'll have Mr. Grandoff confirm that.
Okay. And secondly, I know we don't make our decisions solely on this basis, and several of us having served on these types of boards before, C R B, et cetera, but the neighbor to the north, which is the impact, directly impacted neighbor, did they approve? Did they eject? Did they abstain?
They did submit a record into the, or a letter into the A R C record on July the eighteenth from Elizabeth McTillany, I'm sure I'm saying that incorrect, who owns the abutting property to the north. She said she had no objection to the demolition of the existing garage, the new construction, or the variance that was being requested. And she signed that letter.
I wasn't aware of the demolition. So that garage goes away? Were they replacing it with a new garage, or?
This is really, you know, somewhat of a separate request. It was on the same application, but the A R C had approved the demolition of this one-story accessory structure and approved a replacement structure in August. So, the, you know, the items dealing with the accessory building were resolved. The outstanding item still was the variance and the small addition on the primary structure.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing known. We'll go to the petition. Mr. Grandoff?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My name is John Grandoff. My address is Suite 3700 Bank of America Plaza, and I'm joined this evening by Jamie Mayer, who's an associate in our office, and she's going to make the presentation. I compliment Mr. Fernandez on his very detailed summary to you on the essence of the matter before you this evening. We respectfully request that you reverse and approve this variance, and I'm going to introduce Jamie now, and she will present the appeal case to you. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Jamie Mayer for the applicant 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700, and I have been sworn. I'm going to use the Elmo. I guess, I don't know if it automatically turns on.
It's automatic. Just place the item and we can, we'll be able to see it.
Okay, perfect. So, to Councilman Dingfelder's question, actually, that was my opening statement is we're asking for 47 square feet. That's the nature of this request. The applicant, Ms. Cindy Smaney, she lives in this home. She's lived here for a while. She loves living in Hyde Park. It's her homestead, but the home was built in 1921. And of course, the people who built it could not have foreseen what would become standard, modern, basic quality of life elements of a single-family home, and frankly, many apartments, and that is a laundry room. Currently, Ms. Smaney has a washer and dryer that are stacked and crammed in a pantry in the kitchen. The floor is uneven there, so the machines shake and rattle violently when they're used. And so it's not a laundry room by any stretch of the imagination, and it's not particularly safe. And this is especially concerning because Ms. Smaney's 80-year-old mother does live with her half the year, every year, and she struggles to use these machines. So, the plumbing for a washer and dryer is already there, of course, and as you can see from the site plan that Mr. Fernandez showed, there is space on the exterior wall to create a bump out just big enough to unstack the washer and dryer, be able to walk in, turn around, fold clothes. Yes, it will still be in her kitchen, but it will be functional, safe, and greatly improve her quality of life. So we asked for the variance, a total difference of two feet. And as was stated earlier, the neighbor, Ms. McLeaney, Betsy, she is in full support of the request, but as you'll also see, there is a significant six-foot opaque wooden fence that separates the two properties. So really, Ms. McLeaney won't see much of the addition at all anyway, even though she's in full support of it. And neighbors and anybody in the surrounding area from the right of way won't really see much of it either, because the same six-foot opaque wooden fence buffers the entire backyard. So, the ARC denied the variance on the grounds that the applicant had not shown consistency with the variance criteria, and one of the criteria they specifically called out was that the hardship was self-created, which I will go into later. However, I just want to express how much evidence we put forth, photos, site plans, elevations, narratives, floor plans. We walked the commissioners through everything, and we fully believe that we submitted evidence that showed we do meet all of these criteria. In fact, we could have added additional evidence to this record before you tonight, but we haven't added anything other than what we'd already shown the ARC, because we think it speaks for itself. Many, several of the commissioners who denied the variance said, well, surely there's somewhere else in the house that it could go, but those who agreed with us saw what we were showing is there isn't. We have gone through every possibility, and I'll walk you through those alternatives that simply will not work. So here's the floor plan. As you can see, it's the layout, the historic flow of the home is from, the entry is here, and it's straight shot through to the back here, and this is where the porch is. The washer and dryer is in a pantry, and this is the kitchen. So as you can see, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room in here. It's pretty much set in stone, and it is the way it was built. There's really nowhere to build a new room, for example, in the interior to put a washer and dryer, and plus, they would have to replumb the house. Here's the site plan again. I want to point out the grand tree here takes up a huge portion of this corner VR, which constrains the ability to build horizontally or vertically in that area. And there's also a bump out here, you can see it more clearly here, already on the south side of the property, which itself is less than seven feet away from the south boundary line. So what we're proposing here is not unlike that which exists on the house. You've seen these, that's coming out a little dark. Well, you'll have to take my word for it, I guess. This is Ms. McLeaney's house, this is Ms. Smaney's house, and I circled the fence between them, but you did see that on the aerials that Mr. Fernandez also showed. So I wanted to walk you through some interior pictures. Again, as I explained, there's the front door here. You walk straight through, and there's the back doors. This is the pantry with the washer and dryer in it. Everything's backwards. And here it is with the doors open. You can't see it too well because of the quality, but there is a piece of wood here that's been shoved underneath the washer and dryer to sort of alleviate the uneven floor, to somewhat mitigate the rocking and shaking of the machines. And the doors can't be shut when it's operated. And of course, this is not to say that washers and dryers can never be stacked. They can if it's in a place where it's meant to happen, but this is a shallow pantry with an uneven floor. It wasn't built to be a laundry room. And again, Cindy, she's sensitive to her mother's needs, as her mother ages especially. She wants a home that is sustainable and livable for herself and her mother when she's visiting six months out of the year. You've seen the porch earlier from staff, but some of the commissioners suggested that we build an addition protruding into the porch so that we wouldn't need a variance. That would significantly impact the facade here. You've got this lower roof line that no matter what, we would have to take a chunk right out of the middle of it. It would disrupt the flow of the house if we had to move these doors, or alternatively, we would have to remove one or more of the very classic row of double-hung windows. So this facade is so characteristic of the home, what we're proposing is to put it at this corner here, not too different from what's already on the other side, and it will retain the maximum amount of the historic materials, the style, the flow, and just generally the look of the building, and also it's using part of the existing footprint of the home. Plus, if we put it anywhere here, we'd have to add new plumbing, once again. Again, here's a grand oak. It's a spectacular tree. You can see how the canopy extends over the roof of the house, and this radius takes up a large portion of the yard. Here's the side view that you saw earlier with the mechanical equipment here, which further constrains the ability to build on this side, but also to build on that side, we would still need a variance, and the plumbing isn't there, once again. So, I put little arrows on here so you could see specifically, the bump out would be in the very back here. That's the shed that was talked about earlier, but the bump out would be on the back. You can see this significant fence here. This is the second floor of the neighbor's house. So, this is going to be on the first floor, really not going to be so visible. This was taken by me when I was standing in the right of way, so you can see the fence continues all the way to the front of the house, and again, not going to be extremely visible from the right of way either. So I want to walk you through the variance criteria. One of, the first criterion is that the difficulty has to be unique and singular. Well, we showed that as I just went through for you. Everything about this issue is the unique floor plan and lot configuration of the home. It's everything from the location of plumbing to the oak that constrains, you know, the ability to build in that entire portion of the yard, to the flow of the house. And there may be different houses up and down the street in the craftsman style that have completely different layouts. A look on the aerials of the property praiser can immediately show you, these are all different. Each house is completely separate, completely unique, and some people might be able to do this without a variance, but that is simply not the case here. This was the criteria that was specifically noted by the board was that this was a self-created variance. I immediately objected to having it characterized like that, because a practical difficulty or hardship is not self-created just because the property owner wants to change something or build something that requires a variance. If that were the case, I don't think any variance could ever be not self-created. They almost always stem from somebody wanting to change something and not being able to do it without a variance. None of the conditions on site were created by Cindy. She didn't build the house. She didn't plant the tree. So this meets exactly the intent of the code in that she didn't create the conditions. So this provision was misconstrued, and it was heavily relied on by the board, and it was a huge basis for the denial. There will be no injury to health, safety, or welfare. As we, I've discussed, Ms. McLeaney to the north is in full support, and she's the person who would be most directly affected. And she's also got the six-foot fence buffer. And also, this addition is going to be completely in harmony with the style of not only Ms. Smaney's actual home, which already has that bump out on the other side, and it's in the craftsman style, but it's going to contribute to the fabric of Hyde Park, which is known for that craftsman style of so many of the houses. Also, consistent with code and comprehensive plan, for the same reasons. It's in harmony with the historic character of her actual home and the area. We're preserving a home, improving it, extending its relevancy into the 21st century. We want people who care about the historic district to live in these homes, but we can't expect them to live in a time capsule of the year in which it was built. They need to be able to modernize these homes. Ms. Smaney's put a lot of love and money into this home, and she'd like to stay here. There will be a public benefit from this, again, for all of the reasons I've just stated. We benefit from these maintained, preserved historic homes. That's the whole point of the Historic Preservation District, and we want people to keep them, not, you know, knock them down and put something else in its place. So with this, you know, weighing her practical difficulty with the fact that this will benefit the public, this is a de minimis variance, and we think it supports this request. Finally, our evidence was disregarded entirely, that this addition is totally consistent with the district's style. Again, it's the craftsman style, and I'll show you some pictures of houses just up and down her street as I took a scooter up and down and took photos. And we're going to, of course, the materials are going to match the home. I thought this was, this is on her street. I thought this was a great example, because as you can see, although the roof orientation isn't exactly how we're going to do it, it's a bump out at the very rear, and it's blocked by a wooden fence. So this is not unlike what we're proposing. This one's a little more difficult to see because of the significant hedges, but it's the same thing. You can see the roof line there between the hedges. It's this little bump out. More examples, very different roof orientations. It's a very eclectic style. It pretty much does what it wants, and it lends itself very well to these bump outs on all different sides and many different shapes and sizes, some that are even facing each other. This is also a little hard to see, but again, more examples. I think these are two really good examples of the craftsman style, and like I said, just how well it lends itself to these features, these differentiated side facades. And on that note, here were the elevations we submitted. Of course, this doesn't give you the perspective of the depth of the fact that this is going to be back, you know, in the very back of the house, but it shows you kind of how we're going to do the roof. The north facade, this is the side that would face Ms. McLeaney, if she could see it, but she won't because of the fence. However, the windows are going to match the row of windows that currently exist along that side of the house. So with the wealth of evidence we submitted, the neighbor's support, the person who would be most directly affected, the fact that what we're asking is totally consistent with the home, with the district, with the goals of the Historic Preservation District at large, and the fact that we're asking for 47 square feet, some of which is in the existing footprint of the home, and it's a two-foot request, we think all of this overwhelmingly weighs in favor of reversing the denial and granting Ms. Smaney her laundry room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder, you're going to raise your hand?
Only after you close.
Oh, no, I thought your hand was going up. Anybody else on council have any questions or comments? No? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this? I don't believe so.
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Okay.
I believe that maybe some people downstairs.
No one has registered online to speak, and CCTV has access to the camera for the second floor to see if anyone is on the second floor to speak.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience?
This is Eileen Lozso, Development and Growth. There's no one here to speak on this item.
Motion closed from Councilman Goots, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
What's the pleasure of council? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, I didn't catch your name, but Mr. Grandoff, your associate, did a great job. She doubled her salary job.
Yes, listen to him.
As somebody who recently renovated a craftsman bungalow, they are very delicate, and you can't just flop things where you, you know, where other people might think you should. So I think the, I'll move to reverse respectfully. I know they work hard, but it looked like a close call, three to two. I'll move to reverse the ARC's decision without conditions. I believe that they, the petitioner and the applicant have met the five prongs required for the variance, and I especially want to note a couple of things. It's only a two-foot variance on the side yard. It's toward the rear, so at the end of the day, I think it'd be extremely challenging for anybody to be able to even see the bump out from the street. The next-door neighbor to the north did not complain. Obviously, to the south is commercial property, and nobody's complaining there. The two-foot bump out obviously only runs about, well, I guess maybe, what'd you say? It's about a total of 40 square feet. So it's not running very long, and it's probably a two- or three-foot room. I believe that there's nowhere else appropriate for the washer and dryer laundry room, and for those reasons, I'll move to reverse the ARC decision as stated.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, Councilman Shelby.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Dingfelder, I believe, the motion I believe would be to overturn the ARC decision, and I believe when you set forth the criteria, you were referencing section 27-114D. Is that correct, sir?
You say so, I will agree with you. Yes.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Viera. Was that correct?
Yes, sir.
Roll call, vote?
Viera?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda. Motion carried with Miranda being absent?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is item number nine. We have two registered speakers, the applicants there, but we'll begin with the city's presentation.
Good afternoon, council, or good evening, council. Susan Johnson Velez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. Council members, this is a review hearing for a design exception 1 pursuant to LDC section 27-60. An alternative design exception allows minor deviations from the strict application of the Land Development Code subject to limitations described in the code. Criteria that staff applies when evaluating an alternative design exception are found in section 27-60E5 of the Land Development Code. This application did not meet the code criteria as determined by the zoning administrator. Petitioner has the burden to prove they meet the criteria for the granting of a design exception. This review hearing, before you tonight is de novo, which means that you are not limited in your review to the information, documentation, or evidence upon which staff based its decision. However, you must apply the code criteria to the evidence presented. Council may impose reasonable conditions upon the design exception to ensure that the public health, safety, and general welfare are protected and substantial justice is served. Now I'll turn it over to Eric Cotton, who will present the case to you.
I need to be sworn.
Let's swear in Mr. Cotton. Mr. Hudson, were you sworn in? No? Raise your hand, and we'll get it all done.
Do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
If you'd like to, I'm sure much pain, please.
Mr. Crew, you're muted. And whoever's not speaking, please mute yourself. I hear a child in the background.
Yes, to repeat, Mr. Galati needs to be sworn in, needs to turn on his camera and be sworn in if he will be speaking. He is the other person signed in to speak in the meeting.
Mr. Galati? Okay? Yeah, please raise your hand, and we'll swear you in.
All right.
Do you swear or affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Very good. Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Here with me one second while I fix this.
Okay.
There we go.
There you are.
Eric Cotton, Land Development Coordination. This was a, this is a petition for review for a design exception 1. It's DE 120-197 for property at 2526 Cordelia Street. The request was to reduce the side yard from five feet down to 1.9 feet, and the rear yard from 20 feet down, or 15 feet down to approximately one foot. The applicant originally applied for, the applicant, the entire request was denied. The applicant then came in and did another design exception, a DE 121-12, presented a presented additional evidence, and as a result, staff approved the increase in the front yard setback from 12 feet to 18.2 feet. The increase is as a result of the block average as required in West Tampa. And we approved the corner yard reduction from five feet down to 3.4 feet for an open porch area that's on the side, which I'll show you momentarily on the site plan. But again, even on the second request with additional information, staff still denied the rear and the side yard. This is the, the site plan in question. You can tell, see on the little red box, what's the request that we denied staff-wise, the 1.9 feet and the roughly one foot in the rear. Property is zoned RS50. It's at the corner of Tampania and Cordelia. It's a single-family home. Just some photos, this is a photo of the front. It's a longer house, so this is the remainder of the front. This is the portion that you see on the picture behind the fence that was approved administratively to reduce the corner yard. That was a condition that it never, never getting closed. It would always remain as spacious as a screen room. This is an aerial photo from the property operator's office. The part that's, I don't know if my mouse is, you can see this area right there in the back. That's the part that was denied by staff. That's the corner and the, excuse me, the side and the rear yard request. That's what we had denied administratively. And this is the sandborne map. This is what I use for justification for the approval of the front yard. The part that's highlighted in yellow, that was the house as of 1976. So the front yard, you can see the front yard's more or less the way it was in '76 with the greater setback. And this corner yard, again, was just a smaller portion that was approved administratively to be reduced. Again, the rear yard, from, from the zoning administrator's perspective, that's a, not a minor reduction. That's a pretty large reduction. It's 66 percent, excuse me, around 60 percent on the side and around 90 percent in the rear. That's a, so that's too large a reduction to approve administratively. Does council have any questions regarding the process of the request?
Do we have any, any questions or comments from council members? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I believe, is the applicant? Mr. Hudson, go ahead, or, or Mr. Gallotti, who's gonna kick it off?
Hey, good evening, council. Tyler Hudson, 400 North Ashley Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me is the property owner and applicant, Dan Gallotti. Can I share my screen?
We can see it. Go ahead, sir.
Can you all see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Eric went over the generally the location of the home. You can see the frontage and the issue with the structure. That's on the left side there, which is the southeast corner. This is in West Tampa. The closest landmark is probably the West Tampa Sandwich Shop, just down the street from there. And this is, I'm sorry, Eric already went through the precise setback reduction we want. I wanna give some history about really why we're here on this property. This house had a history of code enforcement issues that go back many years. There was some inappropriate rental activity of this structure and a history of unpermitted construction. And that's, that's really where things, things start. The house was constructed in 1949, and it was 49 years after that, in 1998, that the unpermitted construction of this southeast addition occurred, caused the setback violations that we're here to confront. The addition has been assessed continuously for property taxes. To be clear, that's not part of the design exception criteria, but noting that. Between 2011 and 2018 is when there was a rat of code enforcement complaints. My client, Dan Gallotti, who's gonna speak shortly, acquired the property in 2019. There's been no unpermitted work by the current owner, and in a minute, Dan will go in detail about some of the permitted work that has been done in the attempt to rehabilitate the structure. And then, as Eric noted, in September of last year, the design exception application was partially approved and partially denied. For some historic context, Eric shared this handbook from 1976. This is from, I believe, 1939, when this entire block was, was not inhabited. But you'll note to the south and to the east development pattern that's somewhat pervasive in West Tampa with very minimal side rear setback structures being either connected to, as in the case of 2719 Kathleen, or in the same lot as the primary structure. Well, I'd like to go through briefly the criteria that are applicable to this case and that you all need to apply in overturning it, which is what we're requesting this evening. The first is that there's no interference with others. I would note at the outset that the McFarland Park Neighborhood Association, who Dan's been in touch with, does not object to this request, and we do not know of any neighborhood opposition, despite this being publicly noticed with a conspicuous sign up front. We don't believe there is any interference with the rights of others and their ability to enjoy their property as a result of this structure that's been in place since 1998, staying and continuing in its form. The second criteria about the exception being necessary, we believe that it is necessary to allow this structure, again, to continue and to avoid an unnecessary demolition. If we do not get the exception, then the applicant is gonna be forced to essentially demolish the property that's been fairly nicely integrated into the primary portion of the structure. On the cop plan, I think this is really important, to the extent that the zoning code has to be, and development orders generally need to be compliant and consistent with the comprehensive plan. There are policies in place that encourage, sorry, did you guys just lose my screen? Sorry. The comprehensive plan has policies that I think are applicable here, particularly the discourage of demolition of single-family residences, which will be such a practical necessity. The design exception's denied. Dan will talk about this in a moment, but there is a demand in a lot of parts of Tampa, including West Tampa, for multi-generational housing, and that's exactly what this structure and its current configuration does permit. Laney's policy 9.5.1 speaks to the point about having single-family areas that attract to households with children and other residents. We think this allows that. Subpart D, this exception is the minimum possible. It's actually exactly what's required to preserve the structure in its current configuration. Conditions, E and F, F is really not applicable because there's no specific plans in place for this property, but we're open to any conditions of approval that council believes is appropriate. So we need this design exception to keep the property in its current configuration. That's fairly straightforward about why, why we're here. We're proposing new construction. We wanna maintain this. The subassociation's not opposed. We're not aware of opposition, and this will only apply to the building footprint, not the entire lot. So with that, I'd like Dan to say a few words about why we're here.
Go ahead, Mr. Gallotti.
Thank you, and thank you, Tyler. Yes, I just wanted to basically just reiterate, reiterate that, you know, I have every intention of doing the right thing by this house and by the neighborhood. I'm very familiar with, with West Tampa and McFarland Park, and I, you know, I really appreciate the history that's involved in the neighborhood. And essentially, you know, I saw a home in disrepair with a lot of deferred maintenance here. I was able to determine the floor plan and see that it's, there is enough space for an extended family and realize that, you know, this could satisfy the need in the community, that, that West Tampa is very historic. It's got a lot of multi-generational demand in it as far as living with elders or, or, you know, typically you see three or even four generations living in one house, and I saw the potential there. The house simply needed some TLC and attention. So we've since improved the home with a new roof. We dealt with some water intrusion issues. We fenced in that yard and essentially created a beautiful, updated, safe place for a multi-generational family to call home. So now, obviously, we're at a crossroads. We're, we're no longer sure if we can fulfill that need, and the additional cost alone to remedy this may limit the buyer's ability to purchase this home if we're forced to demo it and, and make right of the existing structure after the demolition. So ultimately, I just feel it would be a shame to have to eliminate a perfectly good structure and take away that offering from a neighborhood that has shown historical demand to provide housing for large or multi-generational families. I really see potential there. I've already received interest in that exact type of demographic, and I'm just hoping to be able to provide that with the existing structure. You know, we believe it to be safe and a quality build, and our contractors have basically confirmed that the house is, is good to go, and we feel confident that it can, it can serve the need of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Tyler, can you put the aerial, do you have an aerial photo showing in the backyard? Because I believe Mr. Cotton indicated there's a rear yard setback at issue and a side yard setback.
I think Eric's aerial is probably gonna be the most helpful to see. Eric, do you mind sharing your screen?
Okay, share my screen again.
You and mine, thank you.
Is it, is this what you're referring to, Councilman?
Yes.
Yeah, can you zoom in on the, on the aerial for the rear, for that rear, the rear roof?
I hate to say this, I honestly, I do not know how to zoom in on a PowerPoint, so... Is that any better?
Okay, go, just go back to the aerial for a second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gallotti, it appears to me that the, that there's an addition. There's an addition as you go toward the rear lot, and then there's a separate roof that even goes closer, and I guess that goes to one feet off, one foot off of the rear property line. What is the, what is that addition behind the addition?
So that is basically a four posts and like a metal, it's almost what they call a lean-to. So it's essentially four posts and, sorry?
Are you trying to keep that?
Not necessarily. That's a covered patio. There is a rear door off of the structure, and that basically is a continued covered patio off of that door.
Okay.
To the right of the tree, I assume?
Oh, yeah, you did zoom in. Okay, so Eric, that, that structure that he's talking about, the, the, I guess, the four post, four post lean-to sort of thing, is that what takes us very close to the rear property line?
The rear property line from, from the site plan, it looks, I don't know if this is a detached structure or an attached structure. Detached.
Was there a survey that came in with this application?
Yes, there was, Councilman Dingfelder, I can put that on screen. And, and just to be clear, the, without giving effect to that, the rear setback reduction is from 15 feet down to 13 feet 2 inches. And I defer to my client, but I believe we could certainly be welcome to, we'd be welcome a condition that it's, the reduction's the 13.2 and not 1. There it is, right there.
Hold on, let me, somebody's gotta worry at me.
This is the addition that's under question. This is the, which I thought was part of the property, but I guess it's a detached shed.
Correct. Yeah, that's right. I don't wanna jump in during your presentation. I think our DE 1 application package requested the 1.9 reduction on the side, which is correct, but I believe our rear was actually 13 feet 2, which, which does not give effect to what Dan referred to as the lean-to.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause what I heard at the beginning of Eric's presentation spoke to a reduction, I think, down to one, I thought it was down to one foot.
That is correct. I, I, like I was, I, I, this had just said covered. Based on the survey, I assume this was part of the main structure, not a second, not a shed, so to speak.
Right.
Because the survey made it look like it was like a covered area that was attached to the main structure.
Right. The application before you, Councilman, is for a reduction to 13.2 on the back, and just so everyone is on the same page, I think that that is what we're requesting, not, not a reduction to one foot on the rear.
But, but even that covered structure, if it's within a foot, it still could be, still could be not, not legal. Isn't that true, Eric? I thought it has to be three feet if it's a, if it's a separate structure.
Yes, sir. If it's a detached structure, that has to have a three-foot side, a three-foot rear, and it has to be five feet from the main structure. So the applicant could remove that. If it's not necessary, he can relocate it elsewhere on the property.
Okay.
I would, I would welcome, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Gallotti spoke to this a minute ago. Based upon what I've heard so far, and I know I'm only one of, it's five or six members tonight, based upon what I've heard tonight, you know, I'm comfortable with leaving, you know, the block, the block addition that's in front of that, which would go back to 13 feet on the rear, one point, I guess, one, one foot on the side, just because it was built a long time ago. And to get rid of or land or move, you know, the, the covered lean-to, whatever it's called. You know, I would, I would feel comfortable with that. Now, I do wanna say one thing, Mr. Gallotti. You're, you're, you're a knowledgeable person, experienced in this type of stuff. When you bought it, I'm sure you were well aware that this wasn't necessarily legal structures. You're not, you're not the innocent purchaser. So that concerns me a little bit, because what's happened here is somebody built something a long time ago. They kinda took advantage of the system, for whatever reason. You know, then they sold it to you, and now you're begging forgiveness on that basis. So, you know, I, that worries me a little bit, you know. We don't want people building illegal structures and moving it and profiting it from, from that, et cetera, et cetera. With that said, I'll get off my soapbox and leave you alone.
Thank you very much. Any other council members? Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, item number nine?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Eileen, do we have anybody to speak in person?
No, we do not have anyone here to speak on behalf of this item.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Gudes. We have a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? What is the pleasure of counsel? Item number nine. And you have sample motions in front of you to overturn or affirm the ARC decision. Oh, that's, that's, that's correct, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Let me flip this over. Okay. The zoning administrator's decision, whether to affirm or... Would anybody like to take it? I don't, I just have the ARC document. I have the ARC document, and I have the alcoholic beverage.
I don't make, making a motion if, if somebody can walk me through it. So I would, I would make a motion to overturn the zoning, zoning administrator ruling. Marty, what, what else should I say?
Council members, this is Susan Johnson Velez, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So the remaining requests before you this evening are to reduce the rear yard setback from 15 feet to 13.2 feet, and reduce the side yard setback from five feet to 1.9 feet. So if that is, if it's council's pleasure to overturn the zoning administrator's denial, then your motion should reflect that you are overturning the zoning administrator's denial and approving the request to reduce the rear yard setback from 15 feet to 13.2 feet, and approving the request to reduce the side yard setback from five feet to 1.9 feet.
So thank you. If it's okay with the clerk and attorneys, I would like to amend the motion to include the language that Ms. Johnson Velez just gave us.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, with a second from Councilman Viera, roll call vote?
Miranda?
Miranda.
Question on the motion? Question on the motion?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Johnson-Velez, does council have the legal ability to condition the motion, condition additionally to remove or relocate the, the covered structure that we were talking about?
Yes, sir, yes, Susan Johnson-Velez, yes, council has the ability to condition its approval of the requested setback variances.
Mr. Glaude has his hand up.
We got a motion to reopen the hearing? Motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the hearing is now reopened, go ahead.
Is that for me?
Councilman Dingfelder had a question, we have the hearing reopen.
I guess, I guess I would ask the petitioner, applicant, Mr. Hudson and Mr. Glaude, if they have any objection to that additional condition of removing that, or putting this structure, Mr. Glaude?
Yes, thinking about it, obviously no one here has been on site, I don't believe that, that lean-to to be very close to the property line and after reviewing the survey, I'm looking at a picture here, actually, I have a picture of the backyard that somewhat shows it, but after looking at the survey, it doesn't seem that they've done any sort of measurement of the size of that lean-to, it's just essentially, they've, they've negated it from the structure itself and just basically shown a covered area, but if I'm able to potentially show my screen, you might be able to see how there's more than, there is more than, thank you, I don't know what the requirement is because we don't have a measurement, but... Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so this is, this is the distance here, you can see this is the edge of the roof, this is the lean-to in question, and this is not only a couple of feet, this may be 10, 12, 15 feet from the distance from the fence and after looking at the survey, you know, they really make no measurement of it other than the fence line to the structure itself, so I, I don't know what the requirement is to keep that, but I just want to make sure everyone is completely informed that this is not in question of being only one foot from the property line, if you, if you look at this here and just me by experience, know that this is a substantial amount of space.
If I can jump in briefly, Councilman Dingfelder, we certainly accept and appreciate the setback reduction from, to 13 feet two inches on the rear and we will ensure that there are no more code violations regarding setback issues, we've trudged along route to get here on that, so we'll make sure that if there is anything past 13 feet two inches, that it will be removed.
Anything else? Councilman Dingfelder, does that, that answer the question?
Well, it's kind of intriguing because the survey definitely shows something different than what the photograph shows. Go back to the survey, somebody?
Yep, if you'd like to show my screen, I have it.
Okay, so I'm looking at the survey and it's like a foot, a foot away, that's probably what Eric saw when he was looking at it, but...
This is Eric Cotton, Development Coordination, I believe that this, what that's showing in the survey, this says covered, if you recall from the aerial from the property manager's office, looks like that was a shed that may have been removed since the property manager took that aerial, because the shed looks like a, a metal shed that was, that was previously on the property, that doesn't appear in the pictures at this point that Mr. Glaude showed, so that may have already been removed.
Yes, I can confirm a previous shed was removed.
I think that's the disconnect between the survey and the pictures that the applicant just showed.
All right, well, in that case, then I don't have any objection, cheers.
Do we have a motion to close?
Second, motion closed.
Motion closed for Councilman Citro, second for Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we had a motion on the floor from Councilman Carlson with a second from Councilman Viera, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscakal?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda, motion carried with Miranda being absent.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just quickly, I have the same concerns that Councilman Dingfelder has about folks changing things and then, and then expecting council to approve them later, but this one is far enough away from, I think whoever did it, that, that I was okay with this, but just as a warning to anybody watching who's thinking about doing that in the future, please don't.
That's right, or else, thank you very much. All right, we, just to be safe, can I get an open, a motion to open items 10 through 15?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Gudes, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, these are all alcoholic beverage and we have five this evening, item number 10.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination Chair, I think I need to be sworn in.
Yes, sir, please swear the gentleman in.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Cruz, City Clerk's Office, there are two speakers that also need to be sworn in, if they would turn on their cameras, please.
All right, I have Michelle Knight and Grace Yang.
Good evening.
Yes, please turn on your cameras and we will swear you in, all right, I see Michelle, we need Grace to turn on her camera. And there's Brian Knox as well, you have not been sworn in, so all, all three, raise your hands and we'll swear you in.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Manassi, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair, good evening, Council, Ryan Manassi with Development Coordination, if I would be able to share my screen, please.
Go ahead, we can see it, yes.
Okay, excellent, so item number 10 is file number AB220-05, it's for the location at 201 General Lee North Dale Mabry and the proposed special use before you tonight is for a small venue beer, wine, liquor consumption on premises and package sales for off premises consumption. Got a little ahead of myself, again, the proposed use for the establishment is bar, lounge and retail sales, the total AB sales area is 6,317 square feet, that consists of 5,572 square feet inside and 745 square feet outside. The site plan does show access driveways on both North Dale Mabry and North B Street and Sterling Avenue, the required parking for the site, as it has multiple uses on it through an approved PD, is 260 parking spaces and the site plan is showing 277 being provided. The subject property is located in the Westshore Business Center and the distance separation requirement is 250 feet from all residential uses, again, the site plan does state that the sales area shall not be located within a parking or loading area or space and that all permits issued after April 1st, 2011 shall be kept on site, which is a copy of the adopted ordinance and associated site plan. The hours that are being requested are consistent with chapter 14, as you can see on the slide, there is an existing active AB sales permit, it's ordinance 93-200 and it was for a 4COPR, so that's reporting license for beer, wine and liquor, and that was only for the indoor area, it's 6901 square feet, so there is a little bit of an increase by making that outdoor area, and again, that is per the previously approved PD site plan and that was from 2012, I'm sorry, ordinance 2012-107, which is file number 1228 and their hours of operation were to city code. The waiver request before you, and that's just to ensure that the PD is in compliance with today's standards with the special use that's in front of you, is, comes from section 27283.12J and that's to allow the commercial traffic to access to the local street, that, those local streets are North Sterling Avenue and the North Marie Drive, or Marie Avenue. The distance separation again is, is within, it's west shore specifically and that is the 250 feet from residential uses and there is a hard route 36 which runs regular service on North Dale Mabry Highway and Route 30 along Kennedy Boulevard. Here's the site plan and generally, it's, it's a little oriented differently just because of the shape of the site, but north is over here to your right, so here's going North Dale Mabry and you can see the subject PD and the property is this oddly shaped lot, but this was the previously approved lot and the subject site itself is right here, which is Building A. Here's the floor plan that is before you and their, their parking calculations for the specific site are 185 seats and that's how it was calculated per the previous PD, so we were trying to keep in, in conformance with that as well. And this might be a better aerial, just kind of show you the outline of the property and here's Kennedy to your south and then North Dale Mabry. Here's a picture of the two establishments that are currently there, I'll let the agent explain more about the applicant's proposal for the site and generally, it's the entire structure that's being AB zone or re-AB zone to include that outdoor area. Here's the north end of the site and then to the right, the south end of the site. These are some of the other establishments that are on there, the approved PD and located to the east of the site and then there's that parking garage that's closer to the east side as well. Barnes &amp; Noble on the north side and then the large glass office building is on the corner of Kennedy and North Dale Mabry. I have a little delay there, sorry about that, so with that being said, your staff report that was presented before you does outline section 27129 general standards for your review as well as section 27132, which are the regulations governing these special uses, with that being said, the development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application and we do find it consistent with the City of Tampa applicable, the applicable City of Tampa coded ordinances, there are some minor corrections needed for the site plan between first and second reading should this ordinance be read and approved and those are outlined in the staff report, staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, do we have any questions? Okay, thank you, next, applicant?
Good evening, council members, my name is Grace Yang, I am at the Gray Robinson Law Firm at 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2700 in Tampa, Florida, it's my pleasure to bring this application before you today to request approval. This is a, a single building with two different businesses side by side operating right now with the hatchery, restaurant and the brass tap. Prior to the hatchery and the brass tap being developed here, it was a old Ruby Tuesday restaurant and Mr. Manassi mentioned that this has been a 4COPR restaurant zoning under ordinance 93-200. This request, we are adding an outdoor patio, which you saw on the presentation, the outdoor patio is currently on the side known as the brass tap and the applicant is requesting the permission to have alcohol sales and consumption in that outdoor patio area in addition to the interior occupied by the brass tap and hatchery under a common roof. We are requesting that the use, in addition to having the outdoor patio approved, allow for the use change to beer, wine and liquor consumption on premises and package sales, off-premise consumption. The brass tap has a craft beer bar and we would appreciate the opportunity to offer package sales as well for the beer enthusiasts to visit. As previously mentioned, there is one waiver required to allow commercial traffic access to a local street, which is North Sterling Avenue, there's currently an existing access from Sterling Avenue, it's the rear of the building that has the office depot in it right now. I'm happy to answer any questions that I have and with me tonight are Michelle Knight from the Company FSC Franchise and Brian Knox.
Do we have any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Michelle.
Yes.
The, the off-premise sales, the package sales, will that be confined to beer only or will it also consist of hard liquor and wine?
It could consist of hard liquor and wine under the license category, if this is approved, it would be a quota license, a 4COP quota license, which would be for beer, wine and spirits. The current business at the brass tap is a craft beer bar, but they do also have a great variety of beers and their license would allow wine and spirit sales. They do offer cocktails right now.
For, but I'm talking for the package store, would they just be selling growlers or would they be selling wine and liquor to take off premise?
The license, the license would allow sales of bottles of wine, growlers, as well as, as other spirits if they choose to do so. But the emphasis currently is, is on the, on the craft beer business.
Thank you, Ms. Yang, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, anybody else? All right, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 10?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Is there anybody in the audience?
This is Eileen Rosario, Development and Growth, there's no one here to speak on this item, thank you.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Gudes, do we have a second?
Viera.
Second from Councilmember Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, where did I leave off with, I believe, Councilman Carlson?
I did last.
Okay, Councilman Viera.
I present for first reading, consideration and ordinance approving a special use permit S2 for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue, consumption on premises and package sales off-premise location and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine and liquor on that certain lot, plot or track of land located at 201 North Dale Mabry Highway, Tampa, Florida, as more practically described in section three, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, providing, or, strike that, repealing ordinance number 93-200, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Gudes, roll call?
Viera?
Yes.
Gudes?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscakal?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Citro?
No.
And Miranda, motion carried with Citro voting no, Miranda being absent, second reading and adoption will be held on March 4th at 9:30 a.m.
Councilman Dingfelder? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Chairman?
Yes, yes, go ahead, Dingfelder.
Okay, anyway, I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Yang, I haven't seen her in many years and, and it's great, great to see you back here again in front of council.
Thank you.
Item number 11.
Thank you, Chair, Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination, item number 11 is AB220-12 for the property located at 2223 Northwest Shore Boulevard, specifically Unit B217, and if I could share my screen?
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the speakers need to be sworn in.
All right, Mr. Manassi has been sworn in, but Ann Pollack needs to be sworn in, go ahead.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And the same goes for Jonathan Scott and Mr. Knox, you've already been sworn in, so you're good, go ahead, Mr. Manassi.
Thank you, Chair, again, just for the record, item number 11, file number AB220-12 for the property located at 2223 Northwest Shore Boulevard, specifically Unit B217, this is at the International Mall, I'll share my screen, please let me know when you see the welcome.
We do, go ahead, sir.
Excellent, so again, the petition before you is requesting special use approval to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a small venue, beer, wine, consumption on premises and package sales off-premise consumption, the total AB sales area for the proposed petition is 3,755 square feet, which contains 2,868 square feet interior and 887 square feet exterior, the proposed use for the property is restaurant and retail sales, the parking requirement for the entire site is 5,669 spaces approved through file number DE1-19-165, the petitioner, the petition is required parking for the specific area is 26 spaces and it's within that overall required parking for that International Mall property. It is located in the Westshore Business Center and the distance separation, distance separation requirement is 250 feet from other residential uses, there are no residential uses within that 250 foot separation requirement, the site plan states that the sales area shall not be located within the parking or loading area or space and all permits issued after April 1st, 2011 shall be kept on site with that copy of the ordinance as well as the approved site plan and that comes specifically from section 27132. As you can see, there's no active AB permit on the property and the hours that they are requesting on the site plan are consistent with chapter 14. There are no waivers being requested and there are no residential uses within that 250 feet and again, the property is located in that Westshore Business Center, it's also in the Westshore overlay. It's also in the West Shore overlay. Here's the site plan as shown, and specifically this enlarged view will show you, um, it's, it's zooming out to give you more reference, the establishment that is before you tonight. Our aerial obviously encompasses the entire property, but then we try to mark it a little bit better, just, uh, so you know specifically where it's located at that International Mall. There's some pictures of the front of the subject property, and then the rear of the subject site. And, uh, again, just for you, in the staff report, section 21, uh, 27, 129 for your general standards is outlined for you, your reference, as well as 27, 132 for the regulations governing, uh, special uses. Uh, per our staff report, the development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application. We do find it consistent with the City of Tampa code of ordinances. Um, we do request some minor modifications needed between first and second reading, should this be approved. I do believe, um, the agent for the application is going to have a minor modification to add as well, um, and she can discuss that with you. Staff is aware of it, and we are okay with it. Um, but at this time, does, uh, council have any questions for staff?
Do we have any questions at this time? Okay. Go ahead, uh, Ms. Pollak.
I, may I share my screen, please? Okay. Does that work? Let me try this again.
Not yet.
Okay. There we go. I apologize.
We don't see it yet on, on our end.
I don't know why this isn't working. Here we go. Well, anyway, if you, I don't know if you can see it, but I'm going to start.
We can't.
Uh, I am here tonight, Ann Pollak, 433 Central Avenue, St. Pete. I'm here representing Tampa West Shore Associates. Uh, we're here to, uh, request a beer and wine consumption on premises and package sales for a site on Bay Street. If you can see my screen, I hope you can, uh, the, the outlined area is where the, uh, the space is. It's located on Bay Street within the International Plaza, between the back of Restoration Hardware and the back of the pub. It's got an entrance, uh, both on, uh, one side and on the other, so you can enter it, uh, two different ways. Uh, it's going to be 10 and 10 Inateca, which is, Inateca is Italian for Wine Library, and this is basically going to be a wine bar, cafe, and shop, offering quality wines and local craft beers, consumption on premises, and package sales of wine and beer, uh, for consumption off-premises. Also be serving light, uh, lunch and dinners, inspired by Italian, Spanish, and Portuguese cuisine. And the chef is a, um, of Toledo, Spain, and, uh, has worked with many Michelin star staffs, uh, chefs around the world. So, other than just having dinner and drinking wine and selling wine, they expect to have wine classes, wine pair dinners, tastings, and meet and greets with various wine, uh, folks that people want to meet. Uh, as Ryan went through, uh, it's a 3,755 square foot area with two small patios, one on either side, no full kitchen, hours of operation per the code and for the lease, um, no waivers requested within the West Shore Business Center, and we do need the required parking. The one change that we are requesting is that, um, for some reason, our occupancy plan that was submitted only provided parking, uh, seating on the larger exterior patio, and we would also like to put seating on the smaller exterior patio. So that would add an additional 10 seats or occupants, and two additional parking spaces, which we have no problem meeting because we have the large amount in the mall, approximately 5,900. So I would just respectfully request, uh, your approval, and, uh, with the addition of the extra 10 seats and the two parking spots. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from council members?
Yes, if I may. Ms. Pollak, are, are these, uh, beers made specifically by this restaurant?
No.
Are the wines?
It would be local ones from local breweries.
Are, are the, are the wines made specifically for this restaurant?
Um, I believe that they have, um, some collaboration with other, uh, with specific vineyards around, um, that they are working with to bring in those wines to here, but I believe they will be selling those wines plus other wines.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? No other questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 11?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Is there anybody in the general public? I just got a...
There is no one here to speak in reference to this item.
We have motion to close from Councilman Goode. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson. All in favor? Aye. Councilman Ding Felder, are you, are you able to read item number 11?
Nope, he's there.
Councilman Ding Felder. Can you read number 11? Do you have it in front of you?
Not handy, but I'll support the motion.
No, okay, all right. Councilman, uh, you want, Councilman Goode?
Uh, file number AB2 dash 20, well, ordinance being presented for reconsideration. In ordinance, approving a special use permit issue two for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue consumption on premises and package sales for off-premise consumption, and making lawful the sale of beer and wine at, at or from, oh, at or from that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at 2223 Northwest Shore Boulevard, Unit B217, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, providing all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict are repealed, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Car, Councilman Ding Felder. Yes, sir.
Uh, just a, a question on the motion.
Yes, sir.
Um, actually, you know what? I don't want to taint the record, so come back to me after the motion is done, if you would, please.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelley, a quick question, as to the, um, addition. Is that noted on a revision sheet, or is that something that needs to be just made, um, Mr. Manassi, as part of the motion?
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. If you would just include it, uh, the revisions are based off your staff report, so they're a little different than probably what you've seen recently in the resounding request, but on pages, uh, you'll see under general requirements of code staff, um, specifically for this petition, it is on page two at the bottom. There are, uh, some minor corrections that are being asked for. The verbal, um, request that Ann, uh, stated for the record would be what we want to include in the motion as well, uh, the further corrections in the staff report.
And again, specifically for the purposes of the clerk, what was, was that with the 10, I believe it was, do you have that?
It's to, um, add the 10 occupants to the smaller exterior patio, which is not affecting any parking. Um, so really, it's just modifying the parking calculations to, um, include that two extra parking spaces that are specifically required for this said establishment, and the, it'll show the 10 occupants on the occupancy plan that will be presented before you with that revision on second reading.
Thank you, sir.
We have motion from Councilman Goode. Do we have a second from? Councilman Carlson? Roll call vote?
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
No.
Miranda? Vera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion, K, with Citro voting no, Miranda being absent, second reading and adoption will be held on March 4th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I, you know, if anybody wants to ask me my reasons, I will do more than I can tell.
I'm busting your shot. Item number 12. Councilman, uh, Ding Felder, yes, sir?
Yeah, this was my follow-up question, perhaps to Ms. Johnson Velez, or Mr. Manassi. Um, the, I remember we used to have quite a few of those, uh, AB applications come in from International Plaza, and I always thought they were just a huge waste of time, um, just because they're, they're encompassed within the mall. They have no, they have no impact on neighborhoods, if the mall approves the lease, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but I'm pretty confident that we have no provisions with our, within our code to address these types of multiple tenant, um, operations. So, I'm just, you know, Ryan, is anything anybody's ever talked about or, or thought about?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ding Felder, I'm sorry to interrupt. All good questions, uh, perhaps, um, better perhaps held for second after second reading, or perhaps talk with staff offline about this, and if it's something that you think is appropriate to bring it back. I'd appreciate that. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and Susan Johnson Velez, Senior Assistant City Attorney, uh, Mr. Ding Felder, I'll just remind you as well that we do have, um, an AB workshop, um, coming up at the end of February on your February 25th workshop agenda.
I did not realize that, and Susan, you will have to remind me on that date for us to chat about this issue. Thank you to...
I will certainly do that.
Thank you.
To everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manassi, item number 12.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassi, I believe the agent would have to be sworn in before I continue.
And we have, uh, yes. Do we have the agent on, online? We have Mr. Grandoff. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manassi, you're all good to go.
Thank you, Chair. Item number 12 is file number AB2 21 dash 01. If I could share my screen, please? Please let me know when you see it.
We can, we can see it. Go ahead.
Excellent. So again, item number 12, AB2 21 dash 01, it is a petition before you requesting special use approval to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a small venue, beer, wine, and liquor, for consumption on premises only. Uh, this petition is proposing a, a use as a private recreational facility, uh, with a total AB sales, sales area of 25,251 square feet indoor, 1,706 square feet outdoor, for a total of 26,957 square feet, which again is first floor only. Uh, the site plan shows singular access driveway on East Washington Street, and this property is along a mixed-use corridor village, so the distance separation requirement is 250 feet from residential uses and 250 feet from the other AB sales establishments. The site plan presented before you does state that sales will not be located in the parking loading area or space, and that all permits issued after April 1st, 2011 shall be kept on-site with the adopted ordinance and the approved site plan. As you can see on screen, there is no current active AB permit, and the hours of operation are listed in this chart, as well as your staff report, and I'll just state them for the record, it's Monday through Thursday, 11 a.m. to 11 p.m., Friday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 1 a.m., and then Sunday, 11 a.m. to 12 a.m., with the exception of New Year's, Eve, and Super Bowl. I believe something got cut off there. I apologize for that. Let me see, Super Bowl, Gasparilla, and Gasparilla, which will be 11 a.m. to 1 a.m. And that should reflect appropriately in the staff report. I think it got cut off, but I stated it for the record. Um, the waiver requested, there are none. Um, the distance separation, uh, waivers, there's none there as well. And again, the property has a future land use designation of the CMU 35, which is a mixed-use land use, which is a mixed-use land use which qualifies the parcel to be in that mixed-use corridor village, which is where we determine that distance separation requirement. The, uh, site plan as shown, here is that singular access on Washington Street, and you can see the large parking area. This is a two-story structure, and the first floor being, um, where the alcohol petition is being requested before you. There's some elevations of this, uh, the structure. And then the aerial, which shows the outlined property in red, and then, as you can see, it's a newer construction in the subject site right here. Here's some physical pictures from the site. This is, uh, looking on Washington Street, viewing south, and then north side, which is a view of the crosstown and some vacant area, and the north side, which is more overgrown vacant area. West side, vacant, and then you can see this other, uh, the gas station over here that's on the corner. View looking east on Washington Street, and then the west view of Washington Street. Again, section 27, 129 is, um, presented before you in your staff report for reference, general standards, as well as 27, 132, 132 for regulations governing special uses. And with that being said, the development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application. We find it consistent with the City of Tampa applicable ordinances. Minor corrections are requested to the site plan, um, between first and second reading, as outlined in your staff report, and if you would, please include that in your motion if approved. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for staff?
Ryan, is that, uh, this new place south of Adamo?
Let me scroll back up.
Washington Boulevard, I think.
Yep, 618, and then here's 50th Street here, so I believe this is where Adamo, Jimmy Kirk, he's always correct me on that.
Is that a new construction building?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is that a new construction building? I'm, I'm, I...
I believe, I believe it is, but, um, I'd probably refer to the agent. He can probably better explain the, um, the process that they're at.
The only thing I can remember used to be on Washington Boulevard down, was the old WTEMPE building down at that, that place.
That's right. Yeah, as you can see, there's a lot of vacant land. I mean, these aerials are probably as new as we can get, and, um, you can see there is a lot of vacancy, um, around the area.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay. Applicant, Mr. Grandoff?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council. Uh, my office is at, uh, 3,700 Bank of America Plaza. My name is John Grandoff, and I have the pleasure of representing the Egypt Temple Shriners, who are, um, very good citizens and a, a jolly group of gentlemen, by the way. They have built their new clubhouse here, uh, just east of, uh, 50th Street on the outskirts of town, as, uh, Mr. Goode's, uh, recognized. Uh, Mr. Manassi has, uh, uh, very well detailed his staff report, uh, and the findings. Uh, we agree with the findings and the brief revision to the site plan. I, um, uh, direct you to page five, where he finds the project in compliance. Uh, we have no objections from, uh, any other s, city staffs nor neighbors. I respectfully request your approval on behalf of the Shriners.
Thank you very much. Did you say a jolly group?
Very, very jolly group.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
And do we have anybody in the audience?
Second.
Councilman Ding Felder, wait, do you have another question, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Grandoff, um, I know he's a member of, of, of the crew, I don't know if he's a Shriner or not, but, but if we, if we don't yet, we get the little hats, because Lord knows I need to convert.
No, not, no, not for you. Sorry, Councilman Ding Felder, not for you.
Wow.
There's a process.
No, you gotta, you gotta go through, and no, you don't have to convert.
I do not, um, I, I'm not a member of the Shriners. I don't have a fez. I don't think they would have me, but I, I think they do good works, and, uh, they're very excited about their new clubhouse.
Mr. Grandoff, you're, you're, you're a notable man. Put in your application. I'll be a top-line signer.
I'll have to wear a fez.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear whether there was somebody on the second floor. I didn't hear if it was anybody.
No, there was nobody, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Any opposed? Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number 12?
Yes, thank you very much. File number AB2 dash 21 dash 01. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance approving special use permit S2 for alcohol beverage sales, small venue, consumption on premises only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless, regardless of alcohol content, beer, wine, and liquor.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me. I'm sorry to interrupt. My mistake. I, I apologize. Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number 12?
Yes, thank you very much. File number AB2-21-01. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance approving special use permit S2 for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue, consumption on premises only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcohol content, beer, wine, and liquor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgive me. I'm sorry to interrupt. My mistake. I apologize, my mistake.
At or from certain lot, plot, tract, or land located at 50-17 East Washington Street, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section two, that all ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict be repealed, providing an effective date with minor modifications between first and second reading, and with the hours of operation that have been noted.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Citro, with a second from Councilman Viera. Roll call, vote.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried with Miranda being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 4th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Manassi, and thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Manassi, you are pronouncing it correctly. It is Adamo.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, 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 it is, good. Yeah, you're right, caught, that's very good.
That was a shout out to Jimmy Cook, he's retired now, but he always used to correct-
Item number, item number 13, I see we have one registered person to speak. I don't know if they're in the audience or if they're online. Mr. Crew?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Crew, City Clerk's Office. There is one person registered to speak. They have not signed into the meeting.
Okay, if, if, and, if and when they sign in, we'll swear them in. Do we have an applicant here for item number 13?
It should be Dixie Liberty for the record, Ryan Manassi. That's the agent for the application.
Okay, and that's the person that I think is registered. Is it Dixie Liberty, sir? Mr. Crew? I believe it is. Go ahead, Mr. Manassi.
That is the only person registered to the meeting. They did not indicated that they were the applicant, it just says that they're registered.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Manassi.
May I ask, is there somebody who's going to be testifying or representing the applicant, Mr. Chairman?
I saw somebody sitting down in the corner of the second floor, but I don't know if they were here for this item.
Can we make inquiry to see if the applicant is-
Do we have anybody in the audience there?
Yes, we do. We have one applicant.
Okay, there you are. Okay, ma'am, if you could just come to the screen, raise your right hand, we're gonna swear you in.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, Mr. Manassi, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. Again, item 13 is file number AB221-02. It's for the property located at 4808 East Broadway Avenue. If I could share my screen, please.
We can see it, go ahead, sir.
Excellent, thank you. So, the petition before you is requesting special use approval to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a small venue beer, wine, and liquor, packaged sales, on premises consumption only. This petition is proposing a use as retail sales shoppers' goods with an AB sales area of 2,000 square feet, which is indoor only. The site plan does indicate that the proposed hours of operation will be Monday through, I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m., and then Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 a.m. The site plan shows dual access driveways on East Broadway Avenue and North 40th Street. The subject property, in reference to the distance separation requirement, is 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,000 feet from residential uses, institutional uses, and other AB sales establishments. The site plan does state that sales will not be located within the parking loading area or space, and that all permits issued after April 1st, 2011 will be kept on site with the copy of the adopted ordinance as well as the approved site plan, and that comes directly from section 27, 132 of our code. As you see on screen, there is an active ordinance from 2010-19. It's for a 2 APS, which is for beer and wine, packaged sales, on premises consumption only, and that was approved for 2,000 square feet. So that is the existing package store as it is right now. Their hours of operation were per city code, and again, the request before you is over here to the right on the screen, which I've already detailed. They are requesting three waivers, and those come from the distance separation requirements, all from section 27, 132, and that's to reduce the required minimum distance separation from 1,000 feet to 189 feet for other AB sales establishments, the second being the distance separation requirement from 1,000 feet to 88 for residential uses, and then the last is the distance separation requirement, 1,000 feet to 312 feet for institutional uses. And those uses are outlined here in the next block down. The residential uses at 2002 North 49th Street, there's zone R16, and again, 88 feet. The institutional uses is the Baptist Church at 4901 East 10th Avenue, and then the closest AB sales is 4911 East Broadway Avenue. There are no hard routes along this subject property. The site plan, as you can see, this is like an existing strip center. There's an Am Scott Building here, and then the existing AB sales area right here outlined in red. Again, the petition before you is trying to increase that from beer, wine, to beer, wine, and liquor for the package sales only. There are some minor modifications that are required that are outlined in the staff report. If this is approved first reading before second reading, and then you can see the outline of the subject property here, just north of Broadway Avenue. There's some photos. You see Route 7, that's the subject property, and then the Am Scott over here, and then this is the north end of the site looking from North 49th Street. This is north of the site, and then the picture to the right is south of the site. Looking west on 7th Avenue to your left, and then west of the site itself. Left picture, east of the site, and that's from the parking lot looking east, and then the east side, east of the site. Again, whoops, got that delay. Section 27, 129 is outlined in your staff report for general standards, as well as section 27, 132 for your regulations governing special uses. The development review and compliance staff has reviewed the application. We do find it inconsistent with the applicable City of Tampa code of ordinances. Again, minor corrections to the site plan are needed between first and second reading, should this be approved on first reading, and if you would include that in your motion, and then staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Manassi? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Just mess, put that map back up, location. Please be that Am Scott Plaza?
Yes, sir.
Put up the Am Scott photo for him, please. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is that it, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have the petitioner. Please state your name, go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name is Dixie Liberty. I'm from Riverview, Florida. I'm here on behalf of Kaylee Enterprises, Inc. at 4808 East Broadway Avenue. He's already in business for a 2 APS, and he's asking to go to a 3 PS package store with beer, wine, and liquor on premises only, on 2,000 square feet. He has 19 spaces provided, only has to have 16. And I have not heard anything from anybody, no one has contacted me. Let's see, I did zone him back in 2008, and he was approved then, and I also have to have three waivers, which Mr. Manassi already mentioned that.
Any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number 13?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Councilmember Ding Felder, I see your hand up, sir.
Just a quick question to Ryan. Ryan, I was having a little bit of trouble seeing the relationship between the, I guess it's an existing building that they want to put that use in, and the church, the church that's close.
Ryan Manassi, Development Coordination. It comes from, the surveyor has to outline institutional uses, residential uses, and other AB sales establishments within that 1,000-foot radius. That's what that waiver request is identifying. It's, it's within that 1,000 feet, specifically, it was at 312 feet, and because the distance separation requirement is 1,000 feet, they have to present that before you as a waiver.
I understand that, but can you show graphically, photo, anything in terms of where the church is? I just want to see if there's any, you know, real impact from the potential wet use to the church.
Let me see if I can get something real quick, one second.
A question, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner, I believe, is still present but not on screen.
I'm here.
And I think maybe perhaps it would be best to have the petitioner on screen.
Can we keep the petitioner on the screen, please?
Thank you.
Isn't that new idea school going up the-
I'm not aware of that, sir.
I'm not aware of that.
So what I can, and I'll try to answer both questions. The school, sir, I'm not aware of, so per our application requirement, they have to identify this per a surveyor, and then the surveyor identifies the closest uses. As you can see, here's number one, Oak Park Baptist Church, and the subject site's outlined in red. I don't know if that's easier. See if I zoom in, sir. One sec. There we go. And then it's, it's located over here, Councilman Ding Felder, and then Councilman Goode. I'm not sure, the, again, the surveyor has to identify the closest use that's within there to identify for the waiver. There may be more of those uses within that 1,000 feet, but as you can imagine, some of those uses can get quite, those lists can get extensive. If it is the pleasure of city council, I believe you can request that from the agent, if their surveyor can provide additional listing between first and second reading, if that would help show all the uses within 1,000 feet, but as you can imagine, it can get extensive, and for waiver purposes, we have to identify the closest.
My, my next question is, if you're within the 1,000 feet, I mean typically our notice is only what, 250 feet for the wet zoning? Is the church within the notice area for the 250?
It would not be, so you can see this outline, this 250 ring that the surveyor has provided from the subject site, and then they're identifying one outside of that 250 feet. But again, this is in relation, this exhibit that's before you is part of the application packet, and that's in relation to the distance separation requirement, not the public notice radius that's required by code.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Have you had any contact with the church?
No, I tried calling them, they never returned my call. I drove by also, and they were not open.
Ryan, can you go back to the picture and tell me where, I guess the front of this building, and tell me where the church is as related to it? Is it down, down, it looks like it might be down and around the corner to the rear, and-
The, the best I can show you, sir, was that, let me pull back up, is the exhibit from the surveyor, because again, these are identified by the surveyor as part of the application requirement.
I know, but I can't see this, I can't see the street layouts.
I can Google it. Let me, let me do a little map for you.
I just want to make sure that, I mean, it's a little bit close, and I just want to make sure that, that it doesn't have any practical impact on the church.
So, here is the subject site, right here off of Broadway, and then here's the 4901 East 10th Avenue. So, north on 49th Street on 10th Avenue.
Where's the subject site again?
Right here, sir.
And then the red dot is the church?
Correct.
I guess it's a good two blocks behind.
Per the survey document, it's outside of that 250-foot radius that they're identifying, and they're identifying, again, for the record, at 312 feet. And the way that's measured, Councilman, is from the point of the alcohol, the closest point of the alcohol establishment to the property boundary. So that 312 feet would be to the property boundary.
Any other questions? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number 13?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
I link to a side, there's no one here to speak on this item.
We have motion closed from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Councilman Carlson, would you like to read item 13?
Sure, I'd like to move. File number AB2-21-02. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, and ordinance approving a special use permit S2 for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue, package sales, on premise consumption only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine, and liquor at or from that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at 4808 East Broadway Avenue, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in section three, that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed, repealing ordinance number 2010-19, providing effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, was it a second from Viera? Roll call, vote.
Goode?
No.
Viera?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Ding Felder?
No.
Maniscaco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Miranda. Motion carried with Goode and Ding Felder voting no. Miranda being absent. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 4th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much. Last item of the night, and it's not even eight. Item number 15, and we have to swear in, Mr. Jim Porter, I believe. Mr. Porter, if you're on, please turn your camera on.
I'm trying. Is it not working? Hold on. There we go.
There we are. Go ahead, sir.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manassi, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan Manassi, item number 15 is file number AB221-05. It's for the property located at 2205 West Kennedy Boulevard, and if I could share my screen. If you would, please let me know when you see the welcome.
We do, go ahead.
Excellent. So, the petition before you is requesting alcohol approval for a small venue beer, wine, and liquor consumption on premises only. The proposed use is a bar with a total AB sales area of 4,485 square feet, 2,615 of that being indoor, and then 1,870 square feet being outdoor. According to the floor plan, there's a total of 151 occupants. That, that floor plan was attached to the site plan that was previously sent over, and the site plan does indicate that the proposed hours of operation will be compliant with chapter 14 of our code. The site plan shows an access driveway on West Kennedy Boulevard, as well as an alley access off Southwestland Avenue. The required parking for the proposed use for bar is the occupancy multiplied by point two five, which comes to that, well, the occupancy being 151 people, times point two five, requiring 38 parking spaces, and there are 21 spaces being provided. The subject property is along a mixed-use corridor village, and the distance separation requirement is 250 feet from residential uses, and then 250 feet from other AB sales establishments. The site, the site plan does state that there are no sales, no sales area shall be located within the parking loading area or space, and that all permits issued, or, I'm sorry, all permits issued after April 1st, 2011 shall be kept on site, the copy of the approved ordinance, as well as the approved site plan, and that comes from 27, 132 of our code. As you can see on the screen, there is an active ordinance. That's 2007-25, or file number Z07-14. That was for a 4 COPR, which is a consumption on premise in connection with a restaurant. The total area being 3,895 square feet that are existing and approved, with 24 parking spaces provided, and the sales hours being per city code. And then the request right next to it before you that I've already outlined. There are three waivers being requested. The first coming from 27, 283.7, and that's to reduce the required parking from 38 required to 21 being provided. That's a 45% reduction. And then the last two being the distance separation requirements from 27, 132. The requirement to 250 feet to residential uses being 30 feet, and then 250 feet required to other AB sales establishments to 48 feet. And then those two closest uses listed below, the closest residential use being the 103 Southwestland Avenue, its own R16, and 30 feet again, and the ABC sale, I'm sorry, the AB sales area being a circle K at 2220 West Kennedy Boulevard, its own CG. They hold a 2 APS, which is beer and wine, packaged sales only at 48 feet. Again, the property is in a future land use designation, UMU 60, which is a mixed-use land use, which qualifies the parcel to be along that mixed-use corridor village, and that's where we get that distance separation requirement. Again, that property is located in the Kennedy Boulevard corridor overlay, and the site plan shows the existing structure. Here is south of Kennedy Boulevard, the access here, and then there's also the access through that alley on Westland Avenue. This is a outdoor AB sales area, which is outlined here, that be on the north side of the property, and then the existing interior area. This is first floor only, and then the floor plan is where we get the occupancy calculations for the required parking. Here's the aerial of the site, so you can see South Howard here. Here's the aerial of the site, so you can see South Howard here, and then West Kennedy, and then the subject site outlined in red. This is a Circle K, and then the closest on Westland, the residential use is directly to the south across the alley. Here's some photos of the site on Kennedy, and then the west, west side of the site. This is the view looking east on Kennedy Boulevard, and then there's two pictures to the right are east, east of the site on Kennedy, and then east of the site on Westland. Those are commercial. North, north side of the street is commercial as well. That's North Kennedy, and then the south side, which should be that closest residential use. The staff report does outline, again, Section 27129 general standards for your reference, as well as 27132 for the regulations governing the special uses. The Development Review and Compliance Staff has reviewed the application. We do find it inconsistent with the applicable City of Tampa Code of ordinances. If approved, there are minor corrections needed to the site plan between first and second reading, as outlined in the staff report, and if you would, please make that part of your motion if approved. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Councilman Ding Felder? Yes, sir?
Mr. Manassas, or maybe Mr. Porter. So it's called Pups Pub. So the question is, if the four-legged occupants, are they counted for two, and does that impact parking space?
You took my joke. You took my job.
The agent to answer that.
And I hope Mr. Porter didn't, didn't pick out the sign out front that just flashed by that spoke about chasing tail. That's really distasteful, Mr. Porter. Carry on.
Fair enough. Thank you, Aaron. Jim Porter, I'm with Ackerman 401 East Kennedy, right across the street, watching you on my window. I am the agent or the representative for the applicant. I'm excited to bring this petition for you. It's sort of a relatively new concept in a relatively old building. It is called Pups Pub, and the idea is that it's a place for pet owners, we own dogs, take their dogs, and have a drink. This is the site of the old bungalow restaurant that you'll recall, and there is an active AB license on it. They had intended, when the owners bought this, they had intended to just use it as a restaurant and a place where the dogs could go. Because of state regulations with the animals, they can't have a food operation. So even there, there's a brand-new kitchen in the bungalow. They're not able to use that. So we worked with Mr. Manassas to identify the appropriate process that we needed to go through in order to secure the AB license, and this is a small venue that we're seeking. There are waivers associated with this, but I'll note that nothing has really changed in the operation. The wet bungalow before, the residence across the alley has always been there. The Circle K has been different things at that corner, but there's always been sales there. The parking, again, is a waiver. We played around with trying to get more spaces, but it seemed to make sense to keep the existing configuration as it is, and asked for the waiver. We're not aware of any opposition. They've been sort of operating under the current license, but this will clean everything up and allow them to go forward with the operation as it's intended. Again, it's a new concept, and they're very excited about it. I think there might be one other one in the city, but it's definitely something new for the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and to respectfully ask for your approval.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Porter, in the outside portion, will there be amplified music?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So that is a no?
No.
Thank you.
If I can, if I can?
Yes?
For Mr. Councilman Citro, just a reminder that that's just a representation that has no weight one way or the other because it's not enforceable.
It's worth a try. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, the question, I'm sorry.
Ryan Manassas, Development Coordination. Just for the record, it's not stated on the site plan. It's not a requirement of 27132 for that. But again, just having the agent state that for the record is not going to be enforceable like Mr. Shelby did state, so if there is something that I needed to put on the site plan, I need that clear in the motion, as well as added between first and second reading.
All right. Anything else?
Yes? I mean, if that's something, I'm trying to think of what, what neighbors might be nearby, but Mr. Porter, do your clients have any objection to adding that to the site plan?
I don't have, I'm not aware of the intent to have amplified music. I don't, they're not with me tonight. I could confirm that between first and second reading. The front is facing Kennedy, and there's, there's a wall there, so I will ask them, and I can confirm that between first and second reading, if that's something council's interested in exploring.
Councilman Citro, wait.
It used to be, it used to be a patio on the Kennedy side. Did they, did they make it solid, subsequently make it solid?
There's, there's still a patio, but there's a wall there now, so. I don't know if you could go back to the, Ryan, if you could go back and show the photos. I just need them to let me share my screen again.
So that's the only outdoor areas is on the Kennedy side?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not overly concerned about music on Kennedy. I think there is some residential further up that.
Yeah, there's no residential near on the Kennedy side. The residential that we identified was on the Westland side, and it's in the alley. Yeah, it'd be to the south here. Ryan Manassas, for the record, if this helps out. So here's the subject site again, outlined in red. So you have commercial along Kennedy, and then going south, you have residential. Yeah. Just for the record, since we're talking about it, again, between first and second reading, any kind of corrections would have to be made in order to be heard at second reading and get the zoning administrator to sign off on the site plan. So again, for any motions, I would just need to make sure, I know the agent has specified he'd have to speak to the client, but I would not be able to add that at second reading presentation because we would be presenting you with a certified site plan from the zoning administrator from tonight's hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Porter, yes, I am concerned with encroachment into the neighborhood. If that can be done, and you can ask your, well, no, I would have to ask that now. If you're sure that there's going to be no amplified out, music outside, can we put that into the record for now?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Citro, the reason I'm going to say no is because remember that whatever representations are made here, it does not run with the land, whereas when it's on the site plan, it runs with the land, and it's enforceable. So what may be true today could change tomorrow unless it's on the site plan. Again, I'm Martin Shelby, City Council attorney. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to point out to Mr. Porter, a couple of months back, we did approve a similar doggy establishment in Drew Park.
Yes, that's the first one, I think.
Yeah, I've driven by it. Looks like it's doing okay.
It's a great concept.
Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Is there anybody down below on the second floor? We have a motion closed from Councilman Goots, second from Councilman Citro, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Viera, would you mind reading this item?
I sure will, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance approving a special use permit S U2 for alcoholic beverage sales, small venue, consumption on premises only, and making lawful the sale of beverages regardless of alcoholic content, beer, wine, and liquor on that certain lot, plot, or tract of land located at 2202 West Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, as more particularly described in Section 3, providing that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are repealed. Repealing ordinance number 2007-25, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? Who's the second? Second from Councilman Carlson. Roll call.
Miranda? Citro?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscaco?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Goots? And Viera?
Yes.
Motion K with Miranda being absent, Citro voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on March 4th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, council. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Can I get a motion to receive and follow all documents?
So moved.
Second.
From Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.